Farver City Council Public Hearing will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Olivier LeBeau.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Peckham.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
And President Ponti.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, law or any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda on our public hearings is a secondhand article store for Robert Bagley. Is there a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Robert Bagley of doing business as One Stop Thrift Shop of 19 Spring Street in Totten, Massachusetts, 02780, for the permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 1649 South Main Street, doing antiques, collectibles, and various used articles to be sold. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Calling all opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Madam Clerk, anything written?
No, sir.
There are none. Motion to close would be appropriate. Made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Auto repair shop for a Roda-Gro-Tache. Motion to open.
Second.
Made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Rodgro-Tache, I think I'm saying that correctly.
Rodrigo.
Rodrigo-Tache. Okay. Thank you, Counselors. 628 Buffington Street, doing business as Tache Auto Repair, Inc., for the license to operate an auto repair shop on 192 18th Street on Lot K138 in the assessors' plan. Any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents. Calling all opponents wishing to speak? Calling all opponents. Madam Clerk.
We have nothing written.
Motion to close.
Made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
Motion so made.
Made by Counsel Vice President, seconded by Counselor Lee. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Farver City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order. Madam Clerk. We'll do that right after. Just do the roll call. Yeah, we just opened.
I'm sorry. Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Kilby.
Yes.
Olivier LeBeau.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Peckham.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
And President Ponti. Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, law or any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Counselor Pereira, citations?
Sure.
Counselor Pereira, through the present, do you mind if I stand with her?
Sure, absolutely.
Do I see standing? Do you mind if I stand?
Oh, no.
Those who are getting a citation, if you'd like to come down, Counselors, you're happy to come down?
Well, as many of you know, we had a Halloween extravaganza at City Hall that was so well-attended that we even had to put tables on the outside. We were going to have it at the picnic grounds, but the weather wanted to do something else, so we couldn't have it there. And it was one phone call. Somebody called me and said, "We'd like to do this. How do I do this? Can you help?" From that one phone call, it just spiraled. And I think that there are so many good people in Farver River that want to volunteer their time to do good things for our community. And sometimes, we just complain about issues. But when people do good things, when people come together from all sides politically, come together to do good for the city, that's really the Farver River that I love to see. And I have some citations. Andrea, if you -- I'm going to put this out. Andrea and Ken Rizendis have Halloween decorations that are out of this world. And they let us borrow it with the help of Perry Long's Moving Company and Walter Monis' Moving Company. They moved everything back and forth. And then, Justin? Come on down. Andrea, come on down. Brian? Oh, I called you Andrea. Roxanne, I called you Andrea. But you came.
I was looking at you, so I knew you were going to be there.
Did you? I know, I did that too. But with Roxanne's phone call, and now we've developed a great friendship between everyone, but I just wanted to take the time to present a citation from the council to all of you for the work that you did. It was extraordinary, and hopefully, we can do it again. So, to Andrea and Ken Rizendis, to Justin, to Brian Vienna, and to Roxanne Longstrom, it's in recognition for your generous decorations and time to making the boo at the beach, which turned out to be a boo at City Hall. And we adapt a very, very, very successful time where families came, a lot of kids came, Counselors came, Pam was there, Trot was there, a bunch of us. Michelle came. We all came. And just thank you, thank you, because this is what the city needs. So, to both of you, in appreciation. To Justin.
Thank you.
Couldn't have done it without you, Roxanne. Thanks. And Brian is our guy that gets donations like you can't believe. And I don't know where Justin went to decorating school, but he is off the charts.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
You can go around to all that. Oh, you didn't take a picture. Okay, get together, so Mr. Longstrom, take a picture.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next item on our agenda is citizens' input. Amy Melody of 6 Oaklawn Street, New Bedford, regarding Creative Arts Network. Motion to waive the rules.
Motion.
Made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. You can go right to that microphone.
All right. Well, I want to introduce myself. My name is Amy Melody. I'm a current intern and student at BCC. And I intern with Creative Arts Network. And I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. So, I have a couple notes in front of me. I just want to ensure I cover all my key points. And to start off, I want to speak today not only to ask for your support, but to personally invite you to a couple really wonderful events that we have coming up to celebrate the holiday. These events are in collaboration with Creative Arts Network, the Farver Community Preservation Committee, and several students from the BCC College. The programs they are in are the event design and intro to hospitality. These events are their class projects, and I do want to stress that. Excuse me. As you know, Farver has the CPA or the Community Preservation Act, which partially allocates tax dollars to historic preservation projects. At Creative Arts Network, we're passionate about the rich art culture and history within this city, which was shown by you guys. Thank you so much. So, on December 11th, I want to mention that we have a historical tour, which will be showcasing six historical projects in the city, starting off with Lafayette Durfee House, the Maritime Museum, the former District Courthouse, Historical Society, the School Admin Building, and lastly, the Abbey Grill. Each of these projects or properties have received funds from the Farver Community Preservation Committee in an effort to preserve these historic properties. Guides will be there and be present to provide a history of each of the buildings and about the projects and how they were funded. Students from the BCC will welcome guests at each of these properties alongside CPA members and property staff. They'll all be present and help share information and answer everyone's questions related to the property and the funding. This event is a prime way to show how taxpayers and the community and where all the tax dollars go. Besides the historical tour, we also have a Festival of Trees. You may have walked through and seen all those trees in our government building. We are allowing individuals and looking for individuals or businesses who would want to sponsor a tree and decorate it. It is a great way to create a new memory by decorating it or showcase your business. We will have toy building workshops, candy stations, and we'll even have Santa present with some live music. At this event, you'll be able to purchase your ticket for the historical tour and a holiday concert, which is held at the Abbey Grill. The holiday concert, which will be at the Abbey Grill, will have light refreshments and a cash bar. The music will begin at 4:00 PM and is free to those who have purchased a historical tour ticket, which if you did not, it's only $5 at the door, and you get to support your community. In closing, I do want to thank you all for listening to me and taking the time to do so. And once again, I would love to see you all there and have your support for this historical event and in support of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is a resolution. Committee on Finance meet with the administration to discuss trash collection and a proposal for a cart program. This item was tabled back in May of 2021.
Motion to take it off the table.
Motion to lift the item from the table made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. It is a very detailed resolution. In summary, there was discussion that was taking place in early 2020 or summer of 2020, whereas Counsel Vice President and Counselor Deion worked tremendously hard to try to find out how we could reduce the solid waste disposal costs. And Counselor Deion specifically, I know, went through quite a bit of work to try to find out why businesses are getting trash cans picked up for free. I know there's been some discussion, most recently, that the mayor is possibly looking into ways to make this become a reality. But the resolution does say, sponsored by our Counsel Vice President, be it resolved that the administration attend a city council meeting on finance to discuss an end date for the trash and recycling pickup that is happening, direct opposition to our ordinances, and present a cart program proposal. Mrs. Sahadi, is Mr. Perry here? Got a paging system here? Allison, can you call his office and see if he's coming on?
Please, thank you.
Mr. Perry, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Counselors, apologize for my late entrance. How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So, the agenda item tonight is to discuss trash and some of the things we've discussed before. So, I'm here to answer any questions you might have as far as where we stand.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President, your resolution. I'd like to acknowledge you first.
Thank you. So, we -- actually, I'm going to defer to Counselor in seat two on this. We had, as you said, we had met with the administration about a multitude of items when we were doing the budget last year. This was brought up again because it was kind of at a standstill. We know that COVID had happened. However, this -- we were expecting this still to be going in the background. And so, I believe it's on here again now. Counselor President, just tell me if I'm wrong here. I know the mayor was questioning this as well, just to see where this is at. And I do know that they have sent something down to us in regards to -- or are sending something down to us in regards to the commercial pickup. They've kind of put that back in our court.
Yeah, that was in the early part of the year where I believe the mayor sent a communication down to the city council saying, "If you want to end business trash, end business trash." He wasn't in a position to do that, so I don't know if that's changed.
So, I did have a conversation with him last week about it, and I believe they were in agreement with it, that we're not supposed to be picking up the business trash. So, that's a conversation that's going to end up back down here. But do you have an update for us, Mr. Perry?
So, yeah, I mean, once that conversation had taken place, we did do some digging to Counselor in seats twos, the work that she had put in. Obviously, we had to do our own work on that. So, we did an audit of the business trash. We took the information that Counselor Deion had given us. We did an audit two different ways. We did one with EZ, gathering the information that they gathered as they collected along the routes each day, identifying the businesses and how many bins that they were collecting. And then, we did our own internal audit of the businesses and how many carts that our compliance officers actually went out and did. We did that over the course of a month, and we came up with some numbers as far as total numbers of businesses, total numbers of carts that were applied to those businesses. And then, at that point, I started to try to calculate what our expected savings would be if we would eliminate that program. So, that's where we were at that point. The conversation, as it sometimes does, died out, and here we are again to discuss it. So, I'm not sure where you'd like to begin, but again, I'm here to answer any questions that I can. Hopefully, I have all the answers you're looking for.
So, we don't have that letter with us, but wait a minute, yes, we do. I'm just going to read this, is that okay, Counselor President?
What are you going to read?
The letter from the mayor, which is what puts it back in the council's court.
Sure.
At a meeting of the City Council Committee on Finance held on May 11th, 2021, a discussion was held regarding collection of trash for commercial establishments. A motion was made and seconded to request that I review the city ordinances available to me. I've had the opportunity to do so, and my thoughts are outlined below. It goes through with the definitions of collection and carts and household trash. The city shall collect solid waste and recyclables from single-family dwellings and multiple-family residential buildings containing up to six dwelling units. Solid waste shall be collected only if placed in official city bag and placed in a green cart. That's been changed. Recyclable should not be placed in green carts, and a solid waste shall not be placed in blue or pink carts. In reviewing these sections, my opinion that without specific verbiage in which commercial trash is collected, and since Section 62-2C does specify collection for household trash, it could be and is implied that collection for commercial establishments does not occur. However, this is currently happening. Then, there's Article 2, provides for collection regulations. Section 6242, which describes placement of refuse from commercial establishments on sidewalks, states business establishments, stores, restaurants, and laundries will be permitted to place refuse and rubbish on the sidewalk on the day of collection, provided such refuse and rubbish shall be in proper containers and bundles, and shall occupy a space not larger than 12 feet long, 3 feet wide, and 4 feet high. As the Counsel Vice President indicated during the meeting, Section 6242 relates to placement of trash on the city sidewalks, but does not authorize such collection. Members of the city council had a clear message, the 110 businesses that are currently -- oh, I'm sorry, this is your letter. I'm sorry, Counselor President. That are currently having trash picked up need to be placed on notice. This will no longer be the case. We don't have the one from there.
We don't have his -- that was my letter to him, recapping.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I saw his name on it. But he responded to it. That's the one I was looking for.
Yeah, and pretty much in summary, the mayor just said.
Said that it doesn't actually say.
If the council wants to change the ordinances, have the council change the ordinances. That was the summary of the letter that the mayor sent to us in response to my letter to him.
Got it. Yep. But we don't have that one. I apologize. That's the one I was looking for. So, with the conversation I had with him, I believe that it's going to be coming down to us sooner rather than later, and that it is going to be addressed. It should be addressed. My opinion is still that, you know, it's not fair that we're picking up certain businesses and not all of them. I still believe that the section on commercial trash on the sidewalk specifically relates to whatever trash day they have with whichever service that they have. People don't seem to want to touch it because it's a -- you know, they don't want to upset the businesses. But if I'm a business and my trash hasn't been picked up and all of these other businesses is, I'm already upset. So, I still hold the same position on this. And I'll yield to Counselor in seat two.
Mr. Perry, or Mrs. Sahadi, can you speak on any conversations that have been occurring internally about what plans there are from the administration?
Yes, certainly. So, we have been meeting with regard to this matter, and I believe the mayor has actually reached out to some of the counselors and indicated that, starting in the spring, we would no longer be picking up the business trash. Mr. Perry's been doing the number crunching in terms of what that means, in terms of budgetary savings. And at this particular point, the mayor has been apprised of that information, and we're working on putting together some type of recovery, if you will, within the budget for purposes of trash. He's also, I believe, Mr. Perry can confirm, going to have the Trash Subcommittee meet further and have some further discussions on this going forward. But at a minimum, I believe he's indicated to a number of you that the plan would be to eliminate trash pickup for businesses.
Counsel Vice President.
I apologize, I know I yielded. But, Mrs. Sahadi, what do you mean by recovery in the budget?
Well, we need to start looking at other mechanisms to include revenue sources, resources in the budget, whether those would be going back to a trash fee or some other mechanism in terms of reducing the trash pickup. We have, again, been working on this, Mr. Perry's been working on this, looking at the number of businesses and the savings are really not significant right now. There's 212 businesses.
225 total.
225 businesses, which will recover about $200,000 in trash fees, which, as you know, is certainly something that's helpful, but it's not going to significantly make an impact on the general fund budget.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Sahadi, I think the 225 businesses, what's the money number?
Between 150 and 200,000.
And did he also say, I believe he said to me, that there's going to be a significant notice given to these businesses that we're currently picking up the trash?
They'd have to be, of course.
And then, this is going to have to be changed or redefined in ordinance, so we don't have any further questions on it?
Yeah, I think that would be the smart thing to do for all involved, to iron out that ordinance so that it states specifically what our intent is. So, if you read an ordinance and it's vague language, it can be interpreted multiple ways. So, I think at this point, with this conversation having taken place over multiple years, I think it's time to kind of put that on paper, get the ordinance correct, put that debate out there in the public so that we can get the verbiage correct in that ordinance, and then there's no interpretation that's needed. The ordinance will clearly state what the intent of business collection is or isn't.
Counselor President, is that something that we can do at this meeting? Can we refer this piece to ordinance, or do we need a new resolution to do that?
You can refer the item to ordinance, and if you'd like, the ordinance committee will work with the administration on preparing an ordinance. You can absolutely do that, yeah.
Then, it will be there. Okay. I'll do that after discussion. I yield.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Good evening.
Evening.
I think I'd like to preface my questions and comments with, so we're talking 200 I think I'd like to preface my questions and comments with, so we're talking $200,000 a year, but I believe we're in year five, so that would represent a loss of $1 million in revenue in the last five years. Would you agree?
150 to 200,000, yeah.
Yep. So though some people might think 200,000 isn't significant, over long, over the long term, it is.
And I agree with that, Counselor. And just to Miss Sahadi's point, I think when, when we use the word significant, just in an overall sense of where we're at as far as the hole we're in when it comes to disposal costs and whatnot, I don't think 150,000 or 200,000 for that matter is anything to scoff at. But I think Miss Sahadi's point, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is it doesn't solve all of our problems, but it is a start.
Agreed.
And it's something, an action we can take that, that can show that, you know, we're serious about this, and something that maybe never should have happened is going to be corrected.
Now, in terms of the ordinance, everything I read, for instance, cart, city-supplied wheeled trash receptor, blue and pink carts solely used for recycling and green carts for household trash. That's pretty specific.
Correct.
Then, when you read into it further, private premises, any dwelling, house, building, or other structure designed or used either wholly or in pot for private residential purposes, whether inhabited or temporarily continuously uninhabited or vacant, and shall include any yard, grounds, walk, driveway, porch, steps, vestibule, or mailbox belonging or appertuent to such dwelling, house, building, or other structure. So again, it brings in a house, a dwelling. Under collection and disposal generally, 62-2, the city shall collect solid waste and recyclables from single-family dwellings and multiple-family residential buildings containing up to six dwelling units. Solid waste shall be collected only if placed in an official city bag, placed in a green cart. Recyclables shall not be placed in green carts, and solid waste shall not be placed in blue or pink carts. Again, they reference dwellings, not businesses, and that's, that's in ordinance. If you look at the EZ disposal contract, whereas EZ offers its collection and haul services to city to ultimately transport or dispose certain quantities of residential and municipal acceptable waste, doesn't say business. Acceptable waste means all household, including occasional non-hazardous. So I think I don't need to continue to go on and on, but everything I see refers to household. Nothing refers to businesses, and I guess the thing that sticks out the most is in the contract, residential collection and haul, the outside, the curbside collection of acceptable waste generated by the households, including limited business customers set forth in Exhibit H. I don't think they would have had to put an amendment or an exception if it was acceptable, and it should have been common practice. So for me, I feel like there isn't really that much to do to any ordinance, because it seems to be pretty straightforward, and where it continues to refer to constantly the household, and then we had to make an exception. In terms of carts, how many carts total are we talking?
681, Counselor.
681. Do we have a breakdown of solid waste, recyclable?
So that's 681 carts total. You're generally, and, and a lot of the numbers I use come from DEP databases that tell you X amount of pounds per bag is in average, whether it be a household dwelling, that'll be one weight, a, a commercial establishment would be another, but your, your recycle weights are generally one-third of what your solid waste is. So you run with that formula, and you basically take a third of what your overall solid waste would be, and that's generally where your recycling is around. And that's how I arrived at my numbers to where we're at, so. And the business collection for solid waste, you're looking at about 100 to 120, 25,000 for solid waste, and then you're looking at another 50 to 75,000 in recycling. Now, each week, what is put out on the curbside varies. So the numbers will never be exact. There'll always be a plus or minus percentage that it will be off. One week, somebody may put out four bags that weigh 100 pounds. Next week, they may put out five bags that weigh 70 pounds. So it's a law of averages, and that's why there's such a varied range, 150 to 200,000. As you said, those numbers aren't small. $50,000 isn't small as well, but there's no way to exactly pin down how much weight is going out each week unless you did a week-by-week audit and weighed each business route that's collected. Now, those business routes are collected along with residential. So those numbers are all averaged out, so it's between 150 and 200,000.
I know that initially, when the mayor was elected two years ago, he had a transition team that looked at the trash as well, and they wrote a pretty comprehensive report. Will, will you be taking anything from that report that potentially could help? And I ask that question because in the report, they make note, and we know a truck of yard waste is $300 to dispose of a truck of, of yard waste. But it doesn't mean the truck is full. So whether full or, or empty or half, no, I can't say empty, no matter what the quantity is in the truck, it's a $300 expense. Is there any way that we can reduce that amount or somehow keep track or of trucks being half-full versus completely full? Because obviously, long-term, that would help as well.
So I know that was part of the transition report, and, you know, that does happen. It's going to happen. There will be a truck that will show up on site, and it's not completely full. But that isn't the norm. That is the exception. So there'll be a route that may be, excuse me, let's say, in, up in the reservation area or, you know, in the, the, the upper north end of the city. That truck finishes up, there's nothing left there, they'll jump on the highway, and they'll go off to the, the disposal site. So maybe that truck isn't full. The vast majority of the trucks when it comes to yard waste that go to dump out are, are maxed out. When you get to the end of your routes on a Friday and there's nothing else to collect the next day or whatnot, I'd say, yeah, you're going to have a few of those trucks. Do I think that those half-empty trucks or three-quarter full trucks are skewing our numbers to where we're not getting the best price we can? I don't think that is happening. I think, yeah, we're paying for certain trucks that might not be full. The vast majority are full. So again, in the law of averages, you're still around the same price that you would pay normally. Another part of that transition report that was, was key was renegotiating contracts and trying to get better prices for things like that. You saw that with the recycling. We've recently renegotiated a contract with a different company, got a much better rate. That company has been very patient with us. We're still working on our contamination issues. We were getting, we were getting better for a while. We had a setback a couple of weeks ago, but we continue to press on that. So renegotiating contracts, trying to get better prices as we go along, i- is something that is very important. We did that with the recycling. Mr. Marola from EZ disposal will be coming in next week to meet with myself and the mayor and Miss Sahadi to try to talk about the future, where we go. We're six years in now to the contract with EZ. Do we continue down that road? Can we look to try to renegotiate early, get a better price? You know, a, a situation like this with the businesses, 681 carts, 225 stops, that's something that will be coming off of their workload, right? So that's, that's a bargaining chip for us to be able to say, we're going to reduce some of what you're collecting. Things of that nature have been happening. You know, just keep in mind, and I ask everybody to bear in mind, that, you know, this isn't a conversation that just happened yesterday. We've been discussing trash in the city since I've been here, and January makes 22 years for me. There's never been a clear answer, a concise answer to fix the problem. Not only that, but it's not unique to just Fall River. I think you see other communities struggling with it. As the clock turns and the, and the calendar turns, things continue to get tighter. Our, our issues with trash will only exasperate going forward because there is not enough room. There's just not enough room to put all of our trash. Not enough people are recycling in the way they should, and that market is starting to turn around, but it hasn't made a complete comeback yet. There are certain commodities, i.e. cardboard, that have made a bounce back. But this is a long, ongoing issue. I think some of the answers that make the most sense may be some of the most difficult to enact, because they have to do with financial impacts to residents and homeowners. But I've stated it before, I'll state it again, of the 250-plus communities in the Commonwealth, there are only 11 that don't have a pay-as-you-drow or a household fee. And of those 11, most are affluent communities that can afford to cover it through their tax base, or they have a infrastructure in place to handle their disposal, i.e. a transfer station or landfill.
And none of, I don't want, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, please, please, come here, anytime you want.
None of my questions or comments are meant to knock any individual or any entity.
No, I get that, I get that.
I personally believe that EZ disposal has done a great job. I think the men work very, very hard. Obviously, there are some neighborhoods that are going to put out more yard waste than others. It was more an overall, general question than a specific question, or, or trying to say that they weren't doing the proper thing.
Yeah. So to get back to your, your question, which the answer is, anything that was put in the transition report, any feedback input that we can get from any of the councilors, the administration, or anybody who has experience in this is all taken into consideration. I don't think there's anything that I would rule out as a possibility, would obviously have to be vetted, but yes, the transition report had some good, good points in it, and it, and it definitely is taken into account. I think the trash task force, we need to get back to that. You know, we've obviously had some events here in the last six to eight months that kind of put the focus and spotlight on other things, but I think we need to get back to that and, and start to dig down deep to get these hard answers and decide as a group which way we go to move forward.
And then my next question would be in terms of commodities. Now, cardboard has been a commodity all along, but you just mentioned that it's, it's increasing in value again.
Correct.
So my next question would be, have we looked into purchasing our own equipment that we can compact that, that cardboard and sell it on the market ourselves? Because that would generate extra revenue as well.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the upgrades at the DPW that I'm looking to do. The council was gracious enough, gracious enough to award us 200,000 this year in my budget, so we're looking at getting some of those upgrades done. We have the feasibility study. Hopefully, you know, with the infrastructure bill or Opera funds, at some point when that debate plays itself out, maybe some of those funds will be able to be used for a new DPW facility as a whole. But the first step with those monies is to get that, that, that facility up to par, looking, you know, professional, you know, laid out in a way that makes sense for the residents when they come in. And, and a cardboard baler is something we looked at, I'd say, about seven or eight years ago. But the, the infrastructure at DPW needs to be upgraded. So where we would need to put that, the electric, that would, you know, electricity and the, and the outlets and the, and the connections that would need to be made to have that baler work, and then you also have the manpower piece, where you'll need to have two men, one in a Bobcat and one monitoring what's going in it to bail it every day. Now, it is a commodity. Now, will that, will that cost outweigh the profit? We don't know yet. Is it going to cut into our, our spending? Absolutely. And I've said this as well, any savings is also, could be looked at as revenue.
Correct.
So either way you look at it, if you save money, then you're increasing your revenue in, in the same respect. So if you pay less or you, you charge more, as long as you're cutting costs and, and streamlining your operations.
Now, do we sell cardboard now?
We don't, because our, our waste stream, our recycle waste stream is commingled. So when EZ picks up a cart at the street, it's, the cardboard is mixed in with the glass, the plastic, the paper. When that gets put in the back of the truck and crushed, the glass gets on the recycling and any other contaminants, and that contaminates that load. So where we could look to do that would be the cardboard from the schools.
Schools.
Exactly, schools. So schools, municipal buildings such as this one, you know, anything, anywhere that generates a significant amount of cardboard, those would have to be picked separate and brought straight to a facility such as Mid-City, so we can recoup those revenues.
So at this point in time, essentially, the cardboard is costing us to get rid of.
That is correct.
So I, I think that's definitely, yeah, worth looking into. I mean, I, I worked for a gentleman who owned a business who had his own machine, and that's what we did. We packed it up. Every week, every two weeks, a truck would come, pick up the huge pallets of cardboard, and, and he was paid, you know, monthly for that cardboard, so.
Certainly.
I believe it's definitely a viable source of revenue. What about with, in terms of, we've talked about a grinder in the past, because obviously with the grinder, you read, you read, you can, you know, you can take a room full of furniture and reduce it to a couple of truckloads. So essentially, that can be a cost savings as well.
Correct, correct. That is another feature and option that we, we would like to expand on, you know, if we can move forward with the DPW facility and the upgrades that I'd like to do there. Again, you know, I'm not, I, I think everybody's familiar with the DPW facility, so when you come up and you know where the old incinerator pits were and the big garage doors up near the office, to the right of that, if you're facing the building, would be that corner where we would look to have a recycling center. So any commodities that we can separate and, and recoup monies for would be something that we'd look to do. But again, it's infrastructure. It's, it's doing what's necessary at that building to get it to a point where it can handle that, and it's manpower. It's, it's manpower to run those kinds of machines. So as I just said, with the cardboard baler, that's two people. With the grinder, you'd be looking to have at least three people. You need a machine operator to be able to load it. Now, the same machine operator loads the cardboard bales, could probably load the, the, the grinder, but at the same time, you're going to need at least two men at that grinder, because you're going to want to make sure they're safe, you're going to make sure everything that's going in there isn't going to damage the machine. ABC Disposal just invested in some of those grinders, and some metals were left in that grinder that actually damaged it and shut them down for, for quite some time. So it's something that we have to vet out and, and do correctly. It's not something we can just shotgun and try to just put in place and say, yep, we're going to do this, we're in the business of grinding up items, we're in the business of baling cardboard. We, we need to be able to have the infrastructure in place first and foremost at the facility, and we have to have the know-how and the, the manpower to be able to do it. And, and as you know, everybody's stretched thin right now, so I, I'd be looking for an investment in, in a few more bodies when we get to the point where we were ready to kind of move that way.
Well, I guess, I guess my position would be at this point, we've talked about trash for 20 years, you've talked about a cardboard, a, a compactor for seven years, that we are at a point that we need to make, stop talking, make decisions, live with our decisions, and, and hopefully make the best decisions. My last question would be to Mrs. Sahadi, in terms of Opera funding. I know that it's water and sewer infrastructure. However, trash would fall under health. Isn't health a proper category for Opera funding?
There are certain aspects of public health that are eligible expenses. I have not seen anyone use public health for trash. I guess we would have to look at, one, what particular areas within public health is allowing us to expend Opera money on any one of these items. So whether it be a piece of equipment, or it certainly would not be the infrastructure portion of it. So as Mr. Perry just indicated, you know, there's hope that in the next bill that comes down, there'll be infrastructure available for the site itself. The question would be, with regard to the equipment, would it fall under any of the eligible public health categories? As you know, we've talked about this, there, the interim final bill is still out there, the final bill is not out there, and there has not been any decision really from the Treasury as to whether you can supplant your budget or you have to supplement your budget.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just that last piece on the public health, I'm writing it down. If I remember correctly, 2013, was it? The public health was, the public, Department of Public Health was used, or sort of the moniker of Public Health was used to implement the purple bags. Was that correct on that?
Board of Health.
What was it?
The Board of Health, you're right.
Yeah, it was the Board of Health, that's right.
Council didn't vote on purple bags, Board of Health did.
The Board of Health was what was the entity that brought the purple bags in during that time. That's why a lot of people still say to this day that they didn't, even though some people support purple bags, they didn't support the implementation of it because it was really taken out of our hands. And it's just, it's just kind of bringing this up, you know, for, for, as a way to, you know, justify Opera funding would be sort of poetic justice on that, on that end. Because, because honestly, if we think about, the, the topic of infrastructure's been brought up a lot, but you specifically have been talking about the infrastructure piece way before it's been brought up, you know, through Opera funding. You've, you've talked about having proactive infrastructure investments, and that's, and that's, and that's why, that's where we land. Like, we've been on opposite sides of fees and certain things like that.
Sure.
However, we do come to common ground, and it's very similar to the water department, actually, that, you know, if, if we had proactive infrastructural investments in the first place, we wouldn't be having what I call money grabs left and right that always seem to fall on the residential. You know, we're, we're talking about a, a change in the ordinance to represent the fact that commercial trash is, is something that is, again, becoming a burden on the residential side. Because when purple bags come down, their residential fees, their residential costs, and they fall on the homeowner, and they fall on the residential. Very rarely do you- Very rarely do you see those costs land on the, on the commercial side. So I think in this situation, I mean, I'm in full support, I've been in full support for a long time, of, uh, eliminating all, whatever you have, you have 601 carts, um, you, you have 225 businesses and expected estimated savings based on law of averages, uh, $200,000. Um, regarding that, that law of averages, you brought that up a handful of times. Um, I think that there needs to be a more, a more of a proactive effort to, uh, measure accurately, regularly, so we know what the exact costs are. I don't know if that's something that could be done.
We, we measure our tonnage each month, we monitor that. Um, so we monitor our recycle, our trash, and our yard waste tonnage each month, and each month it varies. There's very few months where it's, it's, it's the same number.
Would we as a, would we as a body be able to get, um, or is it on a, is it on a website already?
No, no, it's not on the website, but we, we keep a spreadsheet, and I could certainly forward that to the entire council.
I, I would, I honestly like, legitimately would like to see that.
You, you'll get a three-year comparison.
That'd be great.
So you'll be able to go back three years, and, and if you, you see the significant jump. I think we're back here again, you know, I, I don't want to keep saying pay as you throw.
No, I know.
Um, but once we, that was eliminated, um, our tonnage increased, I mean.
You may have some councillors, you have a new council coming, you may have some councillors that'll support that stuff.
We, we were averaging, we were averaging probably anywhere from 15 to 1700 ton a month with the program, uh, and we're back up to anywhere from 22 to 2600 ton a month. So it's more than double.
Yep.
Since the, the program was, was eliminated.
Now, the savings, the expected savings, let's say that you get some of these expected savings, $200,000, maybe more, maybe less. Um, what would be done with those savings specifically?
Well, it would be, it would be a reduction in the expense line item in the 23 budget for disposal. If we implement it now, going forward, um, it would be that portion of the year in terms of, um, a savings. Uh, we will know, um, in, in the next month or so, what the six-month mark looks like for expenses in Mr. Perry's department. So, um, I'm assuming he's pretty close to being on budget right now. But as you know, in prior years, there's always been a need, or there has been in, in the last few years, a need to transfer into his budget by year end to shore up the expenditures.
Uh, when you were doing your analysis, did you, uh, what did you do regarding hybrid areas that have residential and businesses in the same, on the same property?
Yeah, so, excuse me, if it was a hybrid, I tried to delineate just one cart for the businesses. So, and then the rest were for residential.
Okay, um, let me see, I gotta double check on this. All right, so, um, we did have a conversation, a small, very small conversation today about, um, and you did talk about Easy Disposal a little bit today, and we actually had a resolution to talk about when, um, solid waste sometimes gets mixed in the same tonnage as, um, recycling and yard waste. Um, we just had a recent one, uh, come up as well. I know you're going to be speaking with the Easy Disposal representatives, uh, soon about that. But again, this is the reason why I think we need to see, um, a regular, you know, monitoring of, of costs, because there could be some negative costs, right? Or there could be, it could fall negatively on the, on the residential or taxpayer in this situation.
Yeah, no, definitely, I mean, each waste stream needs to go in the right truck.
We, our ordinance even specifies that as well.
Absolutely, there's no, there's no defending that, there's no arguing that point. Um, does it happen? Yes. Should it happen? No.
Yep.
Uh, can we have our eyes on every truck? No. Uh, that's why it's, it's important and it's, it's good when residents send out videos or pitches or notify us that that type of stuff is happening. Um, I think it's happened enough, I'm fed up with it.
It's happened a lot, yeah.
I've, I've, I've really held their feet to the fire as absent, you know, pulling the trigger on any kind of, uh, monetary, um, consequence to them, but I think we're at that point now, and, and they're being brought in, and not, not, you know, again, to councillor and seat two's point. I mean, they've done a good job.
Oh, I, I think so too.
They've, they've done an excellent job.
Yeah.
They've been a great partner to work with. Um, you know, nobody fought harder against privatization than Mr. Pacico and myself. Uh, we didn't want to see our men lose their job, we didn't want to see, you know, what we should be able to do ourselves as a community, go to an outside company. Uh, but once that happened, I'm going to be honest, a lot of the problems that were on my plate went away.
Yep.
Um, and they've, they've done the job, and not absent any issues, but there are going to be issues in any position, any job, any company. Uh, so I think now it's time to bring them in, talk about the future, and to, um, hold them accountable and, and get some, some hard answers from them as far as to, to how come this stuff happens, how do we stop it from happening? And, and let them know that going forward, we're going to need to, to put those financial, um, safeguards that are in the contract. It, it's a good use.
You know, politically, we run a slippery slope when we start talking about privatizing and, you know, union conversations and things like that. However, I'm always of the, of the, uh, mindset that we go with what works the best. And if that worked the best, and I, and I did believe at the time that it did work the best, and I'm glad that it's working out that way. However, we still have an obligation to nip tuck where the mistakes are being made, you know?
Understood.
Now, we haven't seen Mr. McCoy here in a while, however, um, maybe just in this conversation, could we, can we get some kind of language back from the mayor at some point in time as to, uh, what the administration is going to do? I mean, I think that Mr. Perry has great intentions, but his, his hands are going to be limited if the administration itself does not want to do anything in response to what we've been seeing, uh, time by time, when we've seen the mixing up of, of our solid waste and recycling and yard waste, for that matter. So I think, you know, I, I always, I keep a good line with you, we always have a great rapport, I think it's great, but I think that the mayor, the mayor himself or the mayor's office needs to start to make, you know, get it out there as well to the public as to what their concerns are in this and what is going to be done in response to this, because the city councillor does not handle day-to-day operations. We do this, we come to the meetings, we make it public record, we try to do what we can to talk about this stuff. But the truth of the matter is, our hands are going to be tied at the end of the day too. We're going to still go on social media and see all this stuff too, and I'm going to continually keep on going to Mr. Perry about it. But at the end of the day, it's the, it's the mayor that calls the shot on us.
So if I could on that, just for a second, so I will tell you, um, the, the mayor, this administration especially supports, you know, what I do and how I do it. Um, and if you read the contract, I'm sure councillor and seat two's read it, you know, at nauseam, but it states that the responsibility of executing that contract falls with the, the Department of Community Maintenance Director. Um, so I, I have no doubt, and I've talked to the mayor, um, you know, it's time to start issuing the fines, okay? And that's going to be the message that's going to be sent. Um, I, you can get that from me here, I'm the executor of that contract with them, it's my job to hold them accountable.
And to catch 22, because you're trying to renegotiate contracts with them, and you're trying to keep a business rapport with them as well.
Now, to, to, to your other points, maybe there's some other information that you're looking for as far as deeper questions that need to be answered, but when it comes to that particular item, as far as the mixing, I can assure you going forward, they will be held to that financial, um, um, safeguard, which is in the contract if it happens again.
I, I'd like to intervene for a moment. The resolution speaks specifically to the cart program, and we're really going down a whole rabbit hole here of discussing trash and purple bags and EZ Disposal's services. I'd like to get back to the topic at hand, which is the resolution, whereas we're discussing the cart program.
Okay.
So whatever questions that we have from Mr. Perry regarding the cart program, I think we should get, because we'll be here till three o'clock in the morning, talking about what Mr. Perry wants to do, what EZ's doing and not doing, I, I'd like to get back on track.
And I, I really don't, the reason why this, we went down this in the first place was based on the fact that the, the ordinance that we're speaking of in this resolution talks about the separation of the two, and its overall goal is to reduce the, the, you know, trash, the cost of trash. I mean, that's the reason why this resolution exists in the first place, was with, with an opportunity to try to reduce the cost of trash. So I think, I felt as though that was, you know, part of the conversation.
And that's fine, I've let the conversation go on, I just, I want to get back on track.
So, I, I'm going, I'm just going to go through a little bit more of this, just based on that, but I, I will stop, I promise. The cardboard conversation was, was, was brought up, and previous councillor brought that up. So I just wanted to ask, I want to follow up on that, what are we doing right now with, um, school cardboard, right now?
School cardboard, uh, i- if the school has a dedicated cardboard compactor, that will be picked up and brought to Mid-City. So we will, we will recoup as much of the monies as we can, um, but if it's commingled in the compactor that is at that particular school, there's really not much we can do about that, but dump it with our comming.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I do have one last thing, um, the ABC contract, when it comes to the recycling costs, where are we now, uh, with solid waste costs and recycling costs?
$85 a ton for recycle and $106 a ton for solid waste. The $106 a ton for solid waste will go up to 108 in September.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, councillor, and seat eight, councillor Pereira.
Yeah, I just have a, a few quick questions. John, you said there were 225 businesses?
Yes.
But the ordinance, the way it's written now, does not talk about us picking up for business for free, correct?
Correct.
So when are you going to implement that?
So again, that's, that's what the conversation has been. Um, a- as Ms. Sahadi had mentioned, we're looking at the spring, uh, and we're going to obviously need time for us to notify the businesses, uh, give them an opportunity to get a private hauler, um, and then collect the bins. Um, and we need to make sure that we give them ample time to be able to do that. Uh, so we were hoping to start that process at some point in February. Um, s- you know, draft a letter that we'd send to all of them, putting them on notice, um, notify all of the private vendors in the, in the area that would, you know, they'd be looking to, to collect their, their trash and recycle, and let them know that this is coming so that they're prepared, uh, and then start enacting, enacting it as soon as possible after February.
But I just think this went in, in April, April 20th of 2021, where councillor LeBeau and Dion put this in, they're realizing that the ordinance wasn't specific enough. So think of the money that we've lost from now till then.
I understand.
Notifying people, sending out a letter.
Yep.
Which you have to do.
Right.
So let's send out a letter, why, why do we have to wait? Send out the letter, they did all the work, they came up with it. Sometimes I think we take too long to make decisions on things. We did have the trash, uh, subcom- you know, committee that got together, and I know that one of the business owners complained when we said about businesses having to pay, complained that she has dumpsters because she owns big factories in the city. And, you know, the problem that she has is that people will come and throw trash in her dumpsters. And that's a legitimate problem for people, just like you talked about the trash going up from 17,000 tons, whatever, to like 26 tons now. You know that that's a lot of people in outlying areas that bring their trash to Far River. How do we stop that? I think there's a lot more that we need to look at. Doing this is something that, we had already agreed that this is what would happen when the ordinance was first written a couple of years ago. I mean, technically, I would like to see a new DPW building, I'd like to see containers, I'd like to see the grinding machine, I'd like to see, um, you know, a cardboard compactor to make money. But I'd also like to see other ways of us disposing our trash. You know, picking up the trash stays a certain fee, but it's then getting rid of that trash that fluctuates, correct? Because more or less EZ pays their men the same thing, you know what you're going to pay?
Yeah.
For, for the men to work, the trucks.
So EZ car drive is, is the standard.
But when we get rid of it is when it costs more.
That's correct.
Now, with having the train come in, you have an option to put containers on a train and get them out someplace less expensive. You have the pier and the waterway, another way to get them out. I think we need to look at stuff like that, because, let's be honest, when we stop the $10 fee and when we stop the bags, we created a big deficit. What does it cost you to collect and get rid of trash within a year for the city?
Upwards of 10, 10 to 12 million dollars.
10 to 12 million dollars. I mean, I know people, some people that own businesses are saying, why is it falling on businesses? And I know that some people are saying, well, we're going to be charging now for six families or higher. Well, some six families are owned by people in the city who have not sold out, you know, who have 7, $800 rent versus other people that have come in and bought our six families, and I don't know, maybe the councillor, president, or councillor LeBeau will be able to tell you what six families are going for. But then they have a high mortgage, they're charging people a thousand, why are they paying the same that somebody whose owner occupied is? Do we do something with that? I mean, I don't know, I don't know, but, I mean, if, I just think you're telling me you're going to wait until the spring. I'm saying this is a law, it's on the books, it's an ordinance, send out a letter next week.
Well, I just don't want to cause, I just don't want to cause chaos. When I say February, you know, I say February because here we are now November 30th. December comes and goes very quickly, um, and then January is, you know, the new year, so that would give us just about a month.
Yeah, and February will be Valentine's Day.
If you take out.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, they're not getting any Valentine cards from me, councillor.
March is St. Patrick's Day, come on, John, there's always something coming up, let's just get it done. April's my birthday, by the way, just throwing that in there. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor, and seat one, councillor Cadine.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a, um, couple of quick questions, and I, I was going in the same line of question as councillor and, and seat eight, so the timeline, so I, I know we've been here for a year and a half now, we've been starting, having this conversation since 2020 and just kind of rehashing. So we're saying, as in February, just to keep an action item list for me, that we're going to put an end to, uh, business pickup, is that what we're committing to?
Yeah, yes, notifying them sooner than February, uh, letting them know that it's coming in February. And then come February, start to collect the bins from those, those businesses and make sure that they're passed off to a private vendor.
And so when can we expect, I guess, a recommendation or a request from the administration to have ordinance committee advise the ordinances?
I'd say that'd be as soon as possible.
Is that next week, or, I mean, next meeting?
If we know when the next ordinance meeting, meeting is, I, I could make, take the steps to make sure that we have a request on that, on that agenda.
Councillor President, when's our next council meeting?
22nd.
What is it?
December 22nd.
No, we have another one, we have two meetings in December.
Ordinance or council?
December 14th.
December 14th.
December 14th, so.
Because it has to go to council first and then to ordinance, can we?
So can we, can we target December 14th for just an ordinance change? Because it's got to go through ordinance, and obviously ordinance committee can.
I mean, councillor, I, I want to be opposed if the council's okay, after you're done speaking, of course, is to refer this resolution to ordinance, so the ordinance committee can work with the administration and prepare the ordinance so we don't have to wait for the whole.
And, and that's fine too, I just, I just want something from the administration, I, I just, we've been talking, we've been talking about this for a year and a half, I just want to be able to have some deadlines, um, or a timetable at least that we can kind of work with. So, and, and then you quickly mentioned, and I know this is a little off topic, but you mentioned getting the, um, trash committees, steering committee, subcommittee, whatever we're calling it, to, to actually work on.
Solid Waste Task.
Task force, to, to work on some recommendations. Um, I guess my concern is, is just, I, I know we're going in, it sounds a little early because we still haven't wrapped up the FY '22 budget, but we're going to be building on shortly the FY '23 budget. So I think a lot of those, the analysis that you're going to need and recommendations as to whether or not we're pulling triggers on, you know, um, any recommendations that are coming down would need to be taking place rather quickly if, if we're going to incorporate it in the FY '23 budget.
That's correct.
Right, so, um, when can, I guess, when can the council expect, I guess, conversations with recommendations to solid waste, whatever they may be? You know, whether it's the, you know, the trash compactor or, um, I don't know.
I'll take, I'll take the steps tomorrow to send out an invite to the task force, see if we can't get them to reconvene ASAP. Um, you know, if December 14th is the next council meeting, I'll obviously, hopefully have at least one, maybe two, if we can get it in, uh, meetings before then. Uh, and we'll have the ordinance committee meeting, if you're going to refer that tonight, I would imagine before December 14th. That way that conversation can be had, so now come December 14th at the full council meeting, we'll have some information from that ordinance meeting, uh, and, uh, whatever feedback we can get from the task force. I know this, uh, business trash and the six tenement, um, collection was two things, were, were the two big things that we had spoken about at the task force, that's what's on the table at this point.
In, in terms of the, uh, businesses that are being picked up, does that include nonprofits?
Yes.
It does include nonprofits?
Yes, nonprofits.
And, and we are, um, churches, um.
There's only a couple, churches that, that are getting picked up. You, you've got more along the lines of People Inc., Nextdoor, um, you know, things like that.
So that would all be in, all of those?
That would all be included in the, in the elimination of the business.
And just out of curiosity, I, I know over, you know, this cart program goes back to 2008, 2009 timeframe. And do you have off the top of your head how much we have spent just on carts alone?
Yeah, it's, it's a big number, it's a big number. Uh, off the top of my head, I wouldn't even want to guess and give you the wrong information, councillor, but I can get you that total, we have all of that in our system.
I guess, uh, so let me rephrase the question, I guess, and, I know it's, because I know it's going to be in the millions in terms of carts, but the 680 that I guess we're projecting to, to reduce for, for the businesses, how much do you think that would be in, in cost of the carts?
Well, the 681 carts, each cart's, uh, roughly 49.57, I think it is, per cart. So, you know, easy enough to do the math, the 95s are a little bit more expensive, uh, so those are probably up around. So those are probably up around $54 a cart.
Okay. In terms of just kind of going back on where you had talked about the facility down on Lewiston Street, is the, is the steering committee going to be putting together a cost benefit analysis? And I know it sounds great that we're going to collect or shift through the recyclables to try to get as much as we can. But who's, who's doing a cost benefit analysis to see if it makes sense for us to expend and invest in staffing, the equipment, you know? Because I guess I would just be a little concerned about the payback period for the type of machinery. I know we just went, we just privatized, so now we're kind of moving in a different direction to hire more staff to bring them in. And one of the reasons we went privatization was it was supposed to save us money, right? So we were looking at the total fixed costs, the OPEB costs, the pension, you know, healthcare, everything associated with that. So before we start making these decisions, who's, I guess, who's going to be tasked with, you know, providing at least a cost benefit analysis to see if it makes sense for us to go in that direction or to outsource, you know, that type of service down at, at the facility at Lewiston Street?
So I would say at this point, the sorting piece that you referenced, we're not there yet. We're not even close to there yet. We don't have an area that we'd even be able to do that. What I'm more speaking of is a recycling center where we could extract the commodities, so the cardboard, the glass, the things that are making money. And I'd say that'd be a group effort. That would be obviously the administration, myself, Ms. Sahadi, Mrs. Sahadi, and anybody else who would have, you know, vested interest in that. I don't think it would be any one person, but the cost benefit analysis, like I said, an investment would need to be made. And what can we recoup over that time? How much cardboard can I recycle with a baler? How much did the baler cost me? And how much would it cost me to have these two individuals running it for the year? I don't think you recoup it in a year. I think it might take several years, but.
No, and that's fine. I mean, if we've got a payback period of 10 years, then I would say that that makes sense. But I think when you're looking at staffing levels and you're averaging out that somebody potentially could be working for the city for 30 years, and then you've got other post-employment benefits associated with that that can go on for another 30 years. You know, there are costs to the city that we need to understand if we're talking about being in a financial situation that we need to look at reducing our expenses. I don't think we should be making decisions without knowing what we're adding to the expenses, right? So while it sounds good that we would be, you know, recouping that money, it may, we can still recoup it, maybe not at 100%. Maybe it's at 80, 70% by outsourcing versus having folks in and when you're looking at the long-term picture. And I know it comes a little bit challenging, but at some point, it's got to be, it either makes sense for us to do it this way or we need to go in a different direction. I just want to make sure that that analysis is being done and that we're not forgetting to do that analysis going, going forward.
Understood.
And then the, you know, and I know the quick comments about, you know, EZ with, you know, picking up some of the recycling and the trash and the fines. And I think we should have been enforcing the contract from the get-go, right? What I will say is, half the time that we do see these photos, it's because EZ has limited access getting down to those streets. So we don't necessarily hear those parts. There's easy roadwork that's going down, so they can only get one truck down there. So you'll see one truck throwing trash and recycling in there. I think for the most part, if you're looking at the streets that EZ does, you know, if you get stuck behind any, any trash truck on any given day, I think you will see that there are specifically two separate vehicles that are going down there. So I'd be curious to see with that photo if there was, there was some roadwork or a closure or water break, that they could only get one truck down there and that's why it's there. Unfortunately, residents don't understand that and don't really recognize it. But I think internally with, you know, when we have that type of insight and we understand municipal government, I think we need to be a little bit more cognizant of that. And then my final question, and I know you had mentioned that potentially, and I appreciate the proactiveness to try to get EZ to the table because they have been a partner with us and see if we can get better tipping rates and reduced costs associated with our trash service. But the leverage amount, I know you're saying 680 carts off of the, you know, off of their, I guess, their routes. But you also mentioned that we just added anywhere between 2200 to 2600 tons of trash, right? So when I'm looking at reducing 680 carts by adding, you know, 2600 tons of trash because we've got rid of pays your throw program and they bid something on a pays your throw program, you've just created more work for them. And I'm just curious, have they even come back to the city looking for additional monies with regard to the services of, you know, because quite frankly, listen, if I'm EZ disposal, I'm coming back to the city and said, you folks asked for a 10-year contract with a program that included pays your throw. You eliminated pays your throw and you increased all the tonnage, which means that now I can fit less trash in a truck, which means that I need either more trucks or I've got to do more routes, which obviously costs more money. So.
So to your point, no, EZ hasn't come back. And to the mixing point and to the holding them to the safeguards within the contract, that's part of the reason. You know, there are extenuating circumstances in particular situations with the mixing that can be explained away as a construction issue or a road closure. But the bigger issue for me was weighing what has changed since the contract was instituted? How has EZ handled that? And in turn, how do I handle that with EZ? And in, to their, to their benefit and to their, you know, respect from me to them, they have not come back to the table and asked for more. The tonnages have increased anywhere from 800 to 1,000 ton a month, and they haven't come back. So again, they've been a good partner. I've given them leeway for that, which is my purview. Does it make me happy when things happen that aren't making residents happy or aren't supposed to be happening? No. But I try to balance that with what I'm getting in return for their, their, their work.
Now, so my final question is, is getting EZ back to the table, is there any anticipated date? Or I guess timetable in terms of when you would try to consider either reopening or extending a contract or avoiding the contracting?
I'm sorry. We'll be meeting with them Monday at 10:00. So that's going to be the start of those conversations. You know, we'll discuss obviously the mixing. We'll discuss, you know, the remaining years on the contract and what that cost is and what we could do possibly going forward if we look to extend it or try to work a better deal for us and barter a cheaper price if we could. I think that's a, you know, a tough sell, and I wouldn't want to go too far down that road. I don't want to kind of throw out there what my thoughts are going to be when I meet with them on Monday. But Monday, 10:00 AM starts that conversation.
Perfect. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize our colleague in seat four, Council Vice President, we want to remain on the cart program for this discussion. Counselor on seat four, Council Vice President.
I just wanted to clarify two things. Counselor on seat one had said, one was, we did talk about sending this to ordinance right from this meeting.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
And we do have an ordinance meeting scheduled already on December 7th.
Okay.
And the second thing is, and I did speak with EZ disposal today, that picture, there was actually trash in both of those carts. And the request came that there's an issue on that street. They're having trouble getting down that street. If cars are parked on the end, I have a message into Mrs. Pereira in traffic. They can't make the corner and it's a dead end. They're not able to get down the street or back up. But that particular house where that photo was taken, there was trash in both of those barrels. Just want to clarify, I yield.
Counselor on seat two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, just a point of information. Took me a second to find it, but the 65 gallon carts are $48 each and the 95 gallon are $52 each.
So there you go.
So you were like right there. And then the only other comment I want to make is, in the EZ disposal contract, if any portion of a collection route is temporarily blocked or inaccessible for any reason, notice is supposed to be provided to the company. And then collection shall be performed at a time as the parties agree will allow the contractor access the acceptable waste. So really, if there's an issue, they're supposed to be notified in advance and then set up a time that they can get down there. Because I believe that sometimes you're putting the driver at risk in terms of, you know, if he doesn't have enough space, is he going to damage a car? Is he going to hit something which isn't fair to the driver? And even the men trying to work the truck, it makes it very difficult for them. So, I mean, that is something that's in the contract to make it easier for them and more viable. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? Carts, Counselor on seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
I just want to know how much we owe on our trucks. Do you know, Mary?
I, I don't have that information with me this evening.
Can you get that to me? I'm just curious of how much we owe on our trucks.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion on the referral to ordinance. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item three, discussion with the FY '22 Durfee High School debt exclusion. The item is in item two on our full council agenda. Mayor sent over a communication to the city council to add to our agenda where it says, "In the process of completing the tax rate recap in particular form DE1, I am required to notify the council that based on the ballot vote of 3/6/2018 for the Durfee High School construction, the amount of FY '22's excludable debt of 4.489089, this amount will be added to the FY '22 maximum allowable levy. However, we will not be included in the total real and personal property tax levy raised and appropriated FY '22." Mrs. Sahadi, could you please give us a brief overview on what that means, please? And any questions will be entertained.
Yes, certainly, Council President. So I guess fortunately or unfortunately, the Department of Revenue didn't have a certified vote for the Durfee debt exclusion. And so as a result, the DE1 form that is required to be completed hasn't been completed for the city over the last couple of years when we in fact had debt expense that we were not using. Because it's a debt exclusion based on the high school, it simply adds to the levy. And this council needs to be apprised of it being added to the levy and basically indicating to each of you that it could have been utilized as a raised and appropriated. The purpose of the letter was to notify you that it was not being used as raised and appropriated.
So just so everybody at home understands that, that means that you are not going to the debt exclusion this fiscal year?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No.
Hearing none. That is in for discussion. Any other questions on item one, which is item four on our agenda, transfers and appropriations? The mayor and the order appropriating $190,000 from the general fund, free cash to insurance. Mrs. Sahadi, can you give us a brief update on what that means, please?
Yes, certainly. So our property tax, I mean, our property insurance renews every November 30th of each year. This year, the new Durfee was added to the property listing and the old Durfee was removed. As a result, the property insurance has increased $190,000 over what was budgeted for the property insurance. This information or this amount of money is actually net school spending eligible. So it will be part of the reconciliation at the end of the year when we're reconciling the end of the year report.
Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just as the basic question, I think it's for people who might have this question at home as well. How, why would this fall on the city side and not the school side for expense?
Well, it's the, all of property insurance is on the city side. So right now, the allocation of property insurance to the school department is based on the total value of the property to the total of the school properties. And so right now, if you looked at the net school spending calculation, it's been estimated to be about $500,000 annually, and it will be increasing to almost $700,000 as a result of this. Our tax, our property tax insure, I mean, our property insurance went up to a little bit over a million dollars.
When you say net school spending eligible, it means that this $190,000 could be applied to it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Any further questions?
No.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn our committee on finance? Made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Four of a city council meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lord LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponti.
Here. If everybody in the chamber could please rise for a moment of silent prayer. And I ask that you can please keep former school committee man and diamond superintendent Joe Martins in your prayers. Him and his family did pass away. Thank you. I'm going to salute you to the flag. Pursuant to the open meeting, lower any person and make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is the communication from the mayor in a financial order that the sum of $190,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated from the general fund FY '21 surplus revenue to insurance.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is the mayor's communication for informational purposes regarding the FY '22 Durfee High School debt exclusion.
Motion to accept and place on file would be appropriate, made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the mayor's request for a proposed ordinance regarding salary updates.
Motion for ordinance committee.
Motion for ordinance has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number four is the mayor's communication and request for the special act to appoint retired police officers as special police.
Motion to adopt, to approve that.
Motion to adopt. Madam Clerk, there's a revised act that has been received on this. Can you elaborate a little bit on that, please?
I did notice that we do have the Assistant Corporation Counsel here in the audience. I don't know if you'd want to call him down.
Motion away of the rules?
Motion away of the rules have been made by Council Vice President, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, can I just ask, are we, just a point of information, are we looking to adopt Massachusetts General Law? Or have we already adopted it?
I don't know if we've adopted this before, Madam Clerk. I don't know if.
We have to vote on it and then we can do a special act.
I think it would probably be in our best interest to refer the item to ordinance.
Yeah. But perhaps Attorney Atkins can explain it.
Good evening.
Seth Aiken, Assistant Corporation Counsel. It is a pleasure to be before you for the very first time tonight. With regard to the amendment first, the proposed special act went to the council with an additional sentence that should not have been there. And it was a sentence that was at the very end of section five, which indicated that these special police officers, if in fact appointed in the way that we're asking the legislature to appoint them or allow them to be appointed, would be intermittent or temporary police officers. Given the Police Reform Act that was signed into law by the governor on December 31st, 2020, intermittent police officers are no longer really a relevant term. So it was essentially misleading and not the correct terminology for this particular request. All officers are required under the new Police Reform Act to be certified police officers, sworn officers, not sworn constables, sworn officers. And so therefore, the terminology of temporary or intermittent officer was incorrect. So what I'm asking is that the council allow an amended version of that to go forward without that final sentence in section five. I can also speak to the question of Counselor Kadim with regard to where this goes and why this is here in this forum. Is that appropriate at this time?
Yes, sure.
So this is a home rule petition. And so as you know, cities and towns are granted certain powers by the state in order to do certain things that they have to do. However, there are certain situations where in order for changes to be made, the legislature actually has to allow the rule to be enacted the way that the council asks them to. So the way this would ordinarily go is that with the permission of the city council, this would go to our local congressional delegation. That congressional delegation would present it to the legislature, at which point the legislature would vote on it and then I believe it would come back to the city council. The reason it happens that way and it's under the home rule change to the Massachusetts, to Article Two of the Massachusetts Constitution, which would happen in 1966, so there is precedent for this, is that this, anything to do with police officers, especially pursuant to the change, the Police Reform Act that was recently signed into law, implicates civil service, implicates retirement, implicates a number of state-level institutions that these special police officers would be exempt from. And so that's why it's a home rule petition rather than something that would ordinarily go to ordinance and then be voted on by the council.
So it's probably fair to say, Attorney Aiken, that it's appropriate to adopt the item. item, and then the legislator will pick this act up as legislation at the State House.
Yes, Mr. President. That is my understanding.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor in Seat 1, Counselor Kadim.
I'm sorry, did you say that there's some exemptions in here for these specials?
There are.
What were the exemptions?
So, the exemptions would be, and I can direct your attention to the part of the... So, if on the first page, at the bottom, Section 2, special police officers appointed pursuant to this act shall be excluded from Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 31, which is the civil service statute. They are not part of civil service, and so, therefore, do not have many of the rights and privileges that would go along with that. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32, Sections 85H and 85H and 1/2, which is the retirement and disability resulting from service. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 4199A, and Section 99A and Section 100, which is the residence requirement. Ordinarily, there can be a requirement that police officers reside in the town that they're serving in. Specials would not be required to do that. I think it's important with regard to that specific exemption to note that, under this petition, only police officers who are retired from the Fall River Police Department would actually be entitled to become specials, and only police officers who maintain their certification while retired, up until the point of being appointed specials, would be considered for appointment. And that is important because it complies with the two new committees that were established by the Police Reform Act, which is POSTS, which is the Police Officer Standards and Training, which was going to certify eventually every single police officer in the Commonwealth, as well as the Municipal Police Training Committee, which is more, looks at the individual departments themselves. Both of those require a level of training, certification, standards being met by all police officers regardless of whether they're special, part-time, full-time, doesn't matter. And so, that's why police officers who already have some history with the department, have retired from the department, and have maintained their certification through the department are eligible to be specials.
So, I guess I'm in favor and support of this. I guess my only other question is, is there a specific reason why we'll eliminate, limit it to the retired police officers? I mean, other communities have specials that are not, you know, you have retired officers that are specials, but you also have what they would call reserves, and I understand you can't have reserves. The Reserve Academy isn't acceptable by POST anymore, so you've got to have the full academy. So, are we limiting ourselves, since this is going essentially as a home rule petition, are we limiting the potential use of special officers by just having it specifically state retired police officers as opposed to special police officers?
We are.
Is there a reason why we want to do it that way, I guess? I'm just...
So, I have Captain Barden Castro here as well from the Fall River Police. He might be able to speak to some of the reasoning behind it. I can tell you that the reason why this is as narrow as it is, and I acknowledge that it certainly is narrow with regard to how it limits who is eligible to be a special and what that actually means, is in order to essentially know that we know that those officers have continued to be certified, have been trained, and have met the standards of the Fall River Police while they were on active duty, if you will, up until the present, when they're serving as specials. So, I think the idea is consistency of training and quality is the expectation and the goal, and I think that very much conforms with POSTS and how they're looking at police officers and policing going forward.
Right. So, the retired, and I don't need to bring anybody down, so the retired police officers obviously have the full academy, right?
Yes.
Because they were police officers, so we would only be concerned about the training hours over, I think, the two-year or three-year period that's required.
That's right. And going forward, the training, and I think this is also an important thing to note, is that the training will not cause the city to incur additional cost as if they were training with the active-duty police officers, because the Municipal Police Training Committee has established a whole online training portal. Those police officers, specials, would have to be part of that, and that online training portal would allow them to get the training they need to without incurring instructor overtime or anything else like that, which could happen if you were to just have an influx of new officers that require the same kind of training as the on-duty officers or the active-duty officers.
Okay. With that, I yield.
Counselor in Seat 6, Counselor Peckham.
Actually, my question was answered. Counselor Kadim asked it. So, the reason for this is the disastrous Police Reform Bill, in my opinion, that passed. So, now, everything has to go through the MPTC, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, that's why we're going to put, we'll call it as it is, these are reserves, not specials. They're going to have powers of arrest, section powers, same training as the guys on the road. But the reason for going from constable to special is the MPTC qualifications.
Yes, sir. As it stands under Massachusetts law, special constables, even if they're used in the shoes of a police officer, don't really have the power to direct traffic, to write citations, to do any of the things that are required of any certified police officer. There is only that one certified police officer standard regardless of how much you work or don't, and that's identified by MPTC as well as POST.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counselor in Seat 5, Council Vice President. Sorry, Counselor in Seat 4, Council Vice President.
Thank you. I only had one question. On Section 2 was the exclusions?
Yes.
And you had said, the second one, you had said 85 and 85 and 1/2.
Yes.
Was a retirement disability due to service?
There is, so there's a retirement section, which I believe is the overall Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32, and then specifically 85H and 85H and 1/2 is with regard to disability while on duty.
So, if someone was disabled while on duty, they're still able to do this?
No. They would, the state or the city would not be required to indemnify them for medical bills. It would not be required to put them on some sort of disability insurance thereafter. They wouldn't be treated like the full-time police officers on the road. It essentially insulates the city from additional liability for long-term duty to these police officers.
I see. So, it's if they were to get hurt while acting as a special police officer, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I had it as opposite. Thank you. I yield.
Any further questions?
I just...
I'm sorry, Counselor in Seat 4.
I just know that the officer came down to speak on this. I just would wonder, Mr. President, if he has something to add?
Mr. Castro, would you like to come down and speak?
As a member of the police department, or...
Nothing to add, just, yeah, thanks for hopefully approving this measure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Counselor in Seat 6, Counselor Peckham.
Just for clarification as to what Counselor Vice President said, so if they're injured in the line of duty, because that's what this is, hit by a motor vehicle on a detail, God forbid, or something along those lines, they don't fall under the same guidelines as a full-time police? So, what do they do?
So, not only do they not fall under the same guidelines as a full-time police officer, the city is under no obligation to indemnify them for any medical bills incurred after the immediate injury or insure them for the disability that might result from the injury.
All right. Are they going to wear the same uniform as the four of PD?
Yes, they are.
They're going to perform the same functions and duties as the four of PD?
Yes, sir.
So, if they get, God forbid, something happens, let's say they get shot in the line of duty, we're not responsible for that? They're wearing a city seal on the shoulder?
I don't disagree with the point you're making at all, Counselor, and I can tell you, and this doesn't make it right, that this petition essentially mirrors most of what the rest of the cities and the state are doing, and I think there is an interest in trying to limit the amount of exposure that the city has in employing what amounts to a relatively small number of officers. I'm not saying that that is, that necessarily sits well with me as somebody who served and wore a uniform, not a police uniform, but a uniform nonetheless. That said, it is the petition that we came down to. It's what we agreed on.
All right. And are those guidelines under the Police Reform?
They are not.
So, those are separate from the Police Reform Bill?
Yes, sir.
And those were agreed upon within the city to go to ordinance?
It's not necessarily that they were agreed upon. There are, there is a lot of conversation among municipal attorneys and municipalities with regard to how to craft these petitions, and I think the idea is that these police officers are not going to be used in a capacity where we expect them to be in danger. That said, I would never sit here before you and tell you that they won't be. That would be, that would be just untrue. But I will tell you that I think the idea is that we're dealing with a smaller number of officers taking on duties that are designed to have less risk, and at the same time, those officers are undergoing the same kind of training as the regular-duty officers with the intent of helping them avoid risk.
Okay. And so, now that we don't cover them once injured in the line of duty, they also fall under the Police Reform Bill, so they don't have qualified immunity anymore either. So, appointing uniforms on these people, throwing them on the street and saying, "Good luck."
I don't think it's as simple as, I mean, I understand what you're, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I'm not, I won't debate it with you because I tend to agree with the principle of what you're putting out. That said, I don't think it's as simple as just throwing them on the street. There certainly, there certainly are conversations that are had with these specials regarding insurance and regarding how they might prepare for, God forbid, a disastrous potential eventuality. That said, it is not within the city's structure to ensure, indemnify, protect these specials going forward.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Just so I'm clear, last I missed something, Attorney Aiken.
Yes.
Is this only for retired police officers?
Yes, sir. Only officers who are retired from the Fall River Police, who have maintained certifications since retirement and are now interested in acting as special police officers while less than 70 years old, are entitled to be covered under this and be employed as special police officers.
Okay. So, I know you made a comment about constables. This, you're not, we're not, maybe I misheard you. We're not going to be bringing constables in as special police.
No. This actually would serve to disqualify constables from serving as specials. Constables don't have the police powers of a certified police officer, and the new Reform Act does require that all officers serving in this capacity be certified police officers. So, we actually no longer can use constables even if we wanted to.
Okay. Do they get union protection rights?
I'm sorry?
With this, if they be brought back in as a special police officer, do they have the benefits of having police union protection?
No, sir. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 150E is the collective bargaining statute. That you can see also in that line of statutes that these officers are excluded from. They are not included in union protections.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor in Seat 6.
That was where I was going to go with that, actually, too. So, what are we doing with the constables? Because we, all the retirees to work road jobs become constables to be able to do so. And constables do have civil and criminal arrest powers, anything from disturbing a piece and therefore after. The only difference is, is the shakeup in the Police Reform Bill. Are we going to track the constables now? Because I've been bringing this up to the mayor since the day it was elected. We have a book upstairs. As soon as you walk in the mayor's office, it's on the desk. It says, "Constables." It's the first thing you see when you walk in.
Sure.
Are we going to track the constables in the city?
I can't speak to that. I don't know the answer.
Is that a topic you can bring up to the mayor and see if there can be some discussion? Because we're going to lose a lot of the retirees that are currently constables because they now have to fall under the MPTC. We do have other constables that pull a constable license for civil process services only. I asked that maybe something be put into place to track the constables on the civil aspect side of it as well, to see what they're doing, because they're also wearing a patch on their shoulder that says, "Four of a Police Constable." It takes a mayor's signature to sign off to put them out there to work. I don't know. I'm just not, I normally support everything that comes before me for the most part for the police department and public safety. The non-protection, the Police Reform Bill already took that and threw all that out the window. Our full-time police officers aren't protected, okay? Never mind to ask for specials to come back out of retirement, put them on the street in the same uniform these guys are wearing, and have no, have even less protection. I'm just not okay with that. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call. Madam Clerk.
This adoption would be in the, with, including the amendment, correct?
Yes. Motion to adopt is amended. Yes.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLabye LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Next, Senator Business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Attorney Atkins, very nice to have you here.
Yes. Thanks for coming.
Item number five are the election results of the November election.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number six is the Board of Election Commissioners regarding the redistricting of the city.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of citations.
Motion to adopt. The citation has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number eight is the second-hand article, the order granting permission for the second-hand article license on behalf of Robert Bagley. This application was denied by the police and deputy tax collector.
Motion to refer to regulations?
Motion to refer to regulations.
Second.
Made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number nine is the order granting permission to Rodrigo Takash for permission to operate an auto repair shop license at 192 18th Street, and this application was denied by the police chief.
Motion to refer to regulations.
Motion to refer to regulations.
Made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Police chief's report made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have applications for auto body renewals, auto body shop license renewals. Sorry.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have applications for the renewal of auto repair shop license renewals.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have an order for the, actually two orders. Thirteen and fourteen are actually orders for the transfer of auto repair and auto body shop licenses at 232 Lapham Street.
Motion to adopt the transfer?
Motion to amend.
Made by Counselor Peckham. Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number fifteen is the request that the city engineer prepare plans for the acceptance of Glendale Street, except extending from North Main Street to Dead End.
I want to just make, let the record reflect the fact that the auto body shop transfers are both items thirteen and fourteen. Is that clear? Let the record reflect. Madam Clark, reintroduce fifteen again, please.
Item number fifteen is a request that the city council hereby recommends that the city engineer prepare plans for the acceptance of Glendale Street, extending from North Main Street to a dead end.
Motion to refer to planning, made by Counselor?
Made.
For? Peckham?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of claims.
Motion for cooperation.
Motion to refer to cooperation, counsel, has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item seventeen is a request for a structure over a public way.
Motion to approve.
On Everett Street.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a drain layer application for TD construction.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have minutes of the city council public hearing held on November sixteenth.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to approve the minutes made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Vice President. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have National Grid's yearly operational plan and notice.
Motion to accept.
Accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have DEP's notification of the waterways regulations program.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Kadim absent and not voting.
Emergency preamble?
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call. On the adoption of the emergency preamble.
On the adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Motion to pass through all readings?
So moved.
Made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Kadim absent and not voting. This is the proposed ordinance.
City engineer.
Establishing the position of city engineer.
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Dion. Roll call. Discussion. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just a reminder to anyone who was, who didn't get a chance to see that, that meeting. I think one of the changes or one of the features of this situation is that the city engineer position will be directly under the director of DCM. Correct?
I thought it was just contract.
That's a contract position.
Oh, okay, all right. Never mind that. I yield.
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
On adoption of the preamble, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes. Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by, never mind, I'm reading the same one. Scratch that. Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselor Kadim absent and not voting.
Motion to pass through first reading. Motion to pass through first reading made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselor Kadim absent. These are the cemetery fees.
Motion to pass through first reading made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on November twenty-third voted three ayes, one nay to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be referred to the full council for action with Counselor Dion voting in the negative and Counselor Kadim absent and not voting. These are the water and sewer rates.
Motion to adopt first reading.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby. Is there a discussion? Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
Thank you. So, Madam Clark, you said this was sent without a recommendation, correct?
For action, yes.
Thank you.
With no recommendation.
No recommendation. I'll speak for myself and the other committee members can speak if they so choose, but I have always voted in favor of the water and sewer rates. At this time, I'm not in favor in these water and sewer rates. The reason being is we have the ability to use a substantial amount of ARPA funds to change the infrastructure that we have flooding throughout the city. And it, not only, let me start over, sorry. Infrastructure throughout the city, if we don't use those funds for this, which it's approved for, and if we do, I think the ARPA committee has allowed Mr. Furlan thirteen million, of which he's identified eight million. He could legitimately use all of it and then some and not complete all of the work needed. I don't know that we'll see this kind of money again. I know the Stafford Square, the amount given previous council meeting was about a forty million dollar project. We won't see that kind of money again if we don't use it there or in other areas throughout the city that's necessary. We also won't see any reduction in rates, in any reduction in rates for ARPA funds paying for infrastructure rather than the residents paying for infrastructure is going to take a couple of years, according to Mrs. Sahadi, to even be seen. So the only way that I can express that I would like more ARPA funds used for water and sewer infrastructure is unfortunately by voting no. That I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this. You know, I've been really vocal in terms of why I was not going to be supporting it, the use of one-time monies to offset the rates. And part of the compromise, obviously, when we were talking in ordinance committee was I wanted to see a financial policy coming down in terms of the use of free cash, in particular with regard to the water and sewer enterprise funds, the use of retained earnings and establishing at least a percentage that we can all agree, or at least we can begin to plan on what the rate reductions would be used. Mr. Furlan has supplied that, so you know, with the fact that we need to get some water rates, you know, approved so that we can get, make sure that this, these budgets are balanced, I'll be supporting that. However, I don't disagree with Counselor in seat four. I guess what I would say is that even if we utilize ARPA money, it doesn't reduce the rates for this fiscal year. So any use of ARPA monies for any type of bonding or funding are forward-going and not necessarily in fiscal twenty-two. So unless he's trying to leverage, obviously, a vote from the mayor come down and saying that he's going to allow Mr. Furlan to use it, I don't know that, even if we came back down and he did say that we'd be able to use ARPA funds, it's not going to impact the stuff that we've already got because all the infrastructure projects have already been bonded for in fiscal year twenty-two. So with that, I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
Correct. It's not going to impact the rates for, I think they set at the meeting two years, at least two years. But we could be using more funds for more infrastructure work and see a better reduction. I understand it won't affect this year's rates or even next year's.
Thank you. Counselor Kadim, I know you referenced some financial policies that you requested from Mr. Furlan regarding this. Could you elaborate a little bit about what's included in those financial policies?
I only saw it once, so I don't have a phony genetic memory. I think, I think.
Whatever you can remember off the top of your head.
I think the CFO did send it out to the other members, but I believe it was ninety percent was going to be used for the first year. It was going to tail down all the way to fifty percent, which I don't agree with that. I vocalized that at the last meeting. I think it needs to be lower than fifty percent. I think if we're targeting, trying to minimize the use of one-time monies, it should be, in my opinion, less than fifty percent, but I think it's a, it's a start. It's progress. So year, year one would be ninety percent, year two would be an eighty percent reduction, all the way down to.
Reduction of what? I'm sorry.
The use of one-time monies for rate reduction. So then that whatever is left for retained earnings, which is essentially the free cash for the enterprise funds, would be used for rate reduction. And then he's also established the percentage that would be going into stabilization account. So it's a, it's a start. I don't think the policy itself is perfect, but I will also state that the legislative body has no jurisdiction whatsoever over administrative policies. So I think it's, it's progress. It's something that I think we all recognize that, you know, moving forward, we need to have financial policies in order to kind of right the ship in terms of our financial stability. I think it only makes sense for department heads to know, going into a budget, and if the council is on the same page, what the expectations are. I mean, unfortunately, Mr. Furlan comes down and is trying to get a budget passed every single year, and there's a constant battle back and forth. So if we're in agreement that we want to see retained earnings used for rate reductions and we're in agreement with the percentage, then I think it just helps everybody from the beginning of the building of the budget, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I think if we don't dedicate the right amount of ARPA funding now to water and sewer infrastructure, there's nothing saying that moving forward, it will be dedicated to that. And then we won't have the rate reductions that we potentially can have moving forward and in the future. If my memory serves me correctly, we took a couple of votes last year with caveats that ARPA funding could be used to offset the finances, and it didn't happen. They got the positive vote, but the result that we were looking for didn't happen. So that concerns me. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Yeah, the, again, just same conversation that we had at the ordinance meeting is that we, most of us are aware, hopefully the public is aware, that the ARPA funding that we're talking about here will not be applied to this fiscal year, won't be applied to these rates, it won't be applied to the, anything that's new projects. It has, I mean, old projects. It has to be applied to new projects. So it's more of a principle. When we talk about, talked about it with Mr. Perry in the trash department as well, that if there's not a proactive effort from the administration to increase our investment in infrastructure, if we're not learning from the past as all the mistakes, especially with the water department and sewer department. When you talk about the CSO project, when you talk about several different things that we could talk about all around the city where we have all these flooding problems and things like that. And then we also come back to the fact that it always falls on the taxpayer. It always falls on the residential owner. We're going to, we're going to not make investments in infrastructure. We're going to have all this history of all these problems, and then we're just going to say, oh yeah, we'll raise the rates every single year on you until the end of time and still not be able to keep up with what we need to do. So I, I'm going to be voting no. I usually do vote no to rates increases. And in this situation, we, we're going to need to see an investment, a true investment in infrastructure and a serious investment in infrastructure with the money that's coming down the line in order to really make the true changes to water and sewer that we need to see. So that I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. Again, we're against, not against, but for the water rate and sewer rate to go up. And, you know, I think, you know, we have to put the money in and to make sure that, you know, the city keeps running this the way it should be run. But would it be possible to get Mr. Furlan down here for a couple of minutes?
Yeah. Motion away of the rules?
Motion to amend.
Made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Furlan.
And while he's coming down here, you know, you got a bunch of good guys that work up there. And I know they lost a couple of kingpins up there because they're not paying the money. And he had some good help up there and they're gone. And it comes out to the same thing. But if we don't try to address this, if we don't try to get the money to take care of this, what's the consequences, Mr. Furlan?
So, thank you very much, Counselor, for calling me down and everybody else for supporting that. You know, we've been through in the past what will happen if the rates are unapproved. And I think this year has been a perfect example of what happens when the rates aren't approved when they need to be. We lose operators at our water treatment plant because we're not able to pay comparable salaries. DEP takes and changes our ratings, our capacity rating from a adequate to a conditional. You know, we're halfway through the year right now and we don't have rates to support our budget. You know, I've been coming down for years and, you know, Mr. Sullivan came down for years before me and talked about what happens if it doesn't happen. You know, the state does come down. They do notice these things. You know, this year is a perfect example of them changing our capacity. If we go from conditional to inadequate, that's when they essentially come down and start saying, this is what you need for staffing plans. This is what you need for budgetary. That's not a place that we want to be. It's happened in other communities, in other water resource areas. And those communities pay substantially more, substantially more. Look at what Boston's rates are or any of those other communities that get their water from MWRA or some other large supplier like that. That's, it's almost a regulated utility at that point where the state is telling them, this is what you need to do. You need to get the funding for it. So that's not a point. We've always controlled our own destiny. We've been lucky enough in Fall River to be able to get the support from everybody to be able to control our destiny. You look at our rates overall comparative to around the state, and we're not the lowest. I'm not going to say we're the lowest, but we're in one of the lower thirds. You know, and our rates fully support our budget. We don't get any money from the tax levy. Other communities subsidize their water and sewer with money from the tax levy, and maybe that's how they keep their rates down. We don't do that. We actually provide back to the general fund for all, for all the services that we get from general fund. So that adds into our budget. So, you know, you always ask what happens if the rates aren't approved, if we don't support our budget. I think so far this year is a perfect example of what does happen.
All right. Well, I think it's serious business, and I know if we lose control, you know, it's going to be much higher.
Without a doubt.
One of the, they already come down and talk to you already?
Yeah. They, so I've been in conversations with Jim McGlaughlin at DEP and Millie, the director from, for the South Coast Region. There's multiple other things that we've been discussing, but one of them has been a lack of rates to be able to support our budget.
Did everybody get that report, Mass DEP, DWP Capacity Development Survey? Do you guys get this?
I sent it at the ordinance committee meeting and requested that all counselors get copies.
You guys read it? Anybody see it? Anybody see it?
No.
Well, I mean, it tells you pretty plainly what's going on, what's going to happen if we can't find the funding for it, and I just can't see us losing that. We have the power to keep it here. If it goes up, it'll come down, and you're going to pay these guys? You're going to have to pay whatever they say they need to run it with the right people working, with the degrees. You just can't put anybody in there, right? Mr. Furlan?
Yeah, correct. So an operator at our water treatment plant, we need to license the minimum of a grade-three operator onsite twenty-four hours a day. So they need to be a grade-three or grade-four to actually operate the plant. That's what's required to be onsite twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Now, you lost two. What's the story? Where are you now?
Yep. We've lost two operators. We were, we were moving along, hiring some, and we lost two, two of the operators that we had. Our director also, director of water treatment also moved on to a different community to work there. You know, again, and that's a perfect example of what happens. Again, it goes back to the rates, the rates that we pay. You know, I think right now is a tough time too, all around. Regionally, water operators licensure is down. There's a large push for retirement. So, you know, people, the market's competitive out there, and the employees can shop around and get better rates. You know, one of our long-term employees that we lost was here for a very long time and was planning on retiring. He knew other opportunities were out there for a while. But it just comes to a point, you know, where you're here or you could be somewhere else making a substantial amount of money more. You know, we are lucky that a lot of the employees that we do have within the water maintenance division, within the treatment division that work for Veolia do have strong ties to Fall River. Some of them do feel a commitment to the city, and they take value in the city. I think that's what still keeps some of them here. Because, you know, money is everything, but then you also have, you know, somewhat of a sentimental value to the whole entire thing. So I think that's what keeps some of them here, but when you, when there's such a difference between the two, you know, at some point, it just doesn't make sense for people, so.
All right. The bottom line, if you don't have enough money, you don't have the right help. They just come in and say, well, you're not doing it the way it should be done, and we're going to just tell you or dictate to you what you got to do, how many people working, how many hours can they work? And the rate goes up, not what it is now, but much more if they decide they're going to move in. How much you think they could go up? I mean.
You know, Mr. Tario, president of the Water Board, was at the ordinance committee meeting, and he wanted to be here tonight. He apologizes for not being able to come. But, you know, he said it right in the ordinance committee meeting. He thinks if DEP would come up, came in, took over our water department, we would easily see a dollar increase, easily. And I don't disagree with that. You know, I've been told by DEP in recent conversations with them, you know, because they understand. they understand our staffing levels, they understand the stress on our staff right now with not being fully staffed, and eventually you get potentially to a burnout, so DEP's concerned about that, about us burning out the current staff that we have and not bringing in new staff. So, you know, one of the conversations, you know, that I had with them, if we're not able to stop to bring in new staff, or if we have to cut positions, you know, DEP, they told me, you know, right in the conversation, they already feel that we're highly understaffed. But they know through our management ability and our capabilities of the staff that we do have, that we're able to maintain our system, we're able to maintain compliance throughout our system. So that gives them, you know, that keeps them comfortable. But if we start losing staff or losing positions, they're not gonna be as comfortable.
So, how do we avoid the bullet right now?
So for right now, you know, it's, would be approving the moderate rate increases that were proposed this year. The council, you guys have already transferred free cash to make up a deficit from the, from the first 50% of the year where we haven't had a rate increase. So the rate increases stay the same as what has been proposed to you prior. But those rate increases will make our budget hold, they'll allow us to be able to, you know, get a little bit more competitive to be able to get, to get qualified employees in to operate.
Well, the only get to say is, you know, I'm on one side, some people are on the other side. What are we worried about? Yeah, we're worried about that the water and sewer rate to go up and everything else. So, you can pay now, or you can pay later, and give Boston all the authority they do to raise everything, and that's it. Either way, you're gonna get it. You can get it with us, at a little less, and maybe we bite the bullet, see if we get the help and everything else, get things in order. But I think it's a big issue, people always talk about the sewer and water rate, and sometimes I, I tend to forget, you've got guys like Cable TV, they just raise it up and rate it up, rate it up. And here, we're trying to keep it in Fall River, keep it right, keep the price right, nobody wants to hear it. But the other side of the coin, if it goes up there, they'll charge you maybe a dollar. You know, it, it just don't make any sense. I think we should keep it here, avoid that, and that's the way I feel. I'm not, I'm certainly not doing it, votes, it's something that's gotta be done, it's the right, it's the right thing to do. We should do it, it's the right thing to do. I talk about water, our pressure to, our pressure it is, and, and everything else, and I think we've got good water. You know, we changed most of the pipes throughout the city of Fall River, and I know you're doing the best you can to try to keep everything together. But I, I think it's a mistake if we're gonna push this through tonight, and that's the reason why I don't wanna see anybody pay a lot extra, because we missed a vote here. It's not a pleasant thing to do, but I think it's the right thing to do. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor in seat eight, councillor Pereira.
I, I agree. Initially, I must say that I didn't want to increase water rates, and it was a personal thing, because I was really PO'd that you buy all this land, and then you don't want to sell the land, and you don't have people right now to run the treatment facility, but we're gonna get people to go mow the lawn in the summertime. That, Paul, drives me crazy. Sell some of that land, you can, get rid of it. Pierce Street, Hyacinth Street, Old Meridian Street, get rid of that, it's not anything that's protecting the water. That, I got off my chest, so, and I've told you this before. You know me, I have something to say, I pretty much say it. But as far as I was going from adequate to conditional, the reasoning was finance, management, and staffing. However, when you come before us, it's not your fault that certain things have happened. The price of chemicals have skyrocketed. We can't even afford fluoride because there's only one company making it now, and because of COVID, what they're charging is on a, I think it was great that the water department let all the dentists in the city know, I think that was good. But if we don't know these things, we didn't know that you were having so much problem with keeping some of your staff. And, you know, if people can get $25.05 an hour, but the average around here is 28 to 35, for $3 more, I'd get another job, many people would, $3, $4 more, you'd be foolish not to. So, I agree with what you said about the people that work for the water department have a commitment to the city. But those that leave, we can't blame them for leaving to make more money. However, to take care of the fact that the director is now gone, we're hiring Woodruff and Curran, and, I mean, we talked yesterday in the mayor's office, they're getting $25,000 per month to be there, per month. So even if we're gonna have them there for three months, you just spent $75,000, but we can't give our workers $2 more? It doesn't make sense. And I know that there's a whole issue with the union, and the mayor's gonna work with the union, because after me has a group, a varied group of people under their umbrella that they represent, so you can't just give this pocket a raise and not everybody else a raise. I think it's crazy. The oppo money that you're gonna get is to redo some of the pipes, correct?
Yes, so currently, what the oppo committee has committed to me was $13 million to do water main replacement and redo the streets that are affected by those water main replacements. So far, I've proposed an $8.35 million project, which I'm planning to design out through the summer and, through the winter here and start in the spring.
Well, let me, let me tell you how I feel. You run the water department, you know probably more about water than I do, but over the years I've picked up. But at the water filtration plant, there's those four bins that clarify the water.
Filter beds, yep.
The filter beds. And those, to have somebody come in and refurbish them, get them back up, refurbish them, about $100,000, $120,000 apiece to do. Yet, the workers at the water filtration plant, they refurbished it on their own for $30,000. One of them, they did, $30,000. We have three more to go. So if we did those three, that'd be $90,000. So can't you take some of the money from one of these streets you go and get that done? So that we still have, you know, that we don't want any of them to break down because that causes a problem.
Yep.
But I would suggest taking $90,000 of the 13, 13 million that you're getting, and take care of that, too.
Yeah, that's definitely something, you know, again, the savings that we get in-house by doing the work, is something that we're always looking for.
And I, I know that Mr. Terrio said at the meeting, relative to people, the lead found in water. Could you explain that to the general public? Because somebody thinks, you know, there's lead in all our water supply, so maybe coming from you.
Yeah, no, yeah, definitely, and I did speak, you know, we've sent out our public notice, so we did hit an action level by Mass DEP standards and EPA standards. The action level is .015 pots per million for lead, and that's under the lead and copper rule throughout, that's instilled by DEP in the drinking water. The, our, our limit, so the limit, the action limit is .015. What we got back from our sampling sites at the 90th percentile, which is where you need to, where you need to read from, was a .016. So we were 1/1,000th of a pot per million above the limit, above the action limit. The action limit, it pretty much says that what we need to do, there's, you know, it's laid out right in, right in DEP's regulations, what you need to do when you hit an action limit. You need to do a public notice campaign, which we've done. We did mailers to all 20,000 or so of our customers, we did it to all healthcare facilities, prenatal care facilities. We did, you know, I was on the radio and spoke about it, we did a public service announcement that's posted on our website. We do have other languages available of the brochure that was mailed out, there's other languages available on our website, and also within, within City Hall here. So, what that means is, back in the 1920s, 1930s, 1940s, when they were constructing houses, '30s was a really big housing boom within the city of Fall River, they would put in what, what was called lead services. So, the service pipe that goes from the main in the middle of the street into your house is made out of lead. They also used lead within the copper piping within the house, just out of the joints, brass that was in the water fixtures and pots within the water system within somebody's house, the brass has lead into it. That lead can leach into the water. So our water, as it leaves our drinking water plant, does not have any lead in it. As it moves through our distribution system within the city, it doesn't have any lead in it. Where could get lead that leaches in? So if the water's moving through our distribution system, it's not sitting somewhere and it can't really, you know, come in contact with lead and have the lead leach in. Where it would, you know, increase any lead would be in there, if you have a lead service that goes from the main into your house or any portion of that service, in the copper, in the solder that's within, in the copper pipes within your house, from the brass faucet that's at, at your, you know, right at your sink. Those were, those weren't lead-free up until 2014 is when those actually had to be lead-free. Prior to that, they still had a fair amount of lead in, in them. So, you know, it's not every house within the city that, that has that. We're talking pretty much houses that were constructed in the '20s, '30s, '40s, '50s, not so much, but a, a little bit, is the houses where they may have installed those lead services, may have. If the lead service, you know, has not been replaced, so we've been going through, as we've been replacing water mains throughout the city, we typically replace the lead service from the main to the curb stop, which is near the property line. That's been DEP's requirement of us, and we've been doing that, and we've been removing 7% of the full lead services per year over the past 20 years. In the very beginning of the water main replacement project, we actually had just lead service replacement contracts. Originally, within the city, we estimated there was probably about 5,000 houses or buildings that were affected that had a lead service. We're down to probably about 1,000 that have it from, under 1,000 that have it from the main to the curb stop near the property line, so there's about 1,000 that are left. There's more than that, probably in the 3,000 range that have it from...
Point of, point of information, I, I appreciate everything he's saying, but I think he's trying, he's trying to get his rates approved.
Yeah, we wanna try to get rates passed.
I'd really love to help at some point.
Yep.
Mr. Furlan, how many, how many places did you test?
So we tested 64 sample sites.
And how many samples came back with that trace of lead?
So there was eight that were above the action limit, so.
And I just think that people need to know that. And, and I understand the chemicals and everything else has gone up, you know, how we work. It's not your fault, Mr. Furlan, you can't control all of what happened with COVID. But tell us, because if we as a council don't know exactly what you're going through with losing workers and this and that, because, then we can't help you. And it's not your fault that certain things happen. But I guess my colleague in seat number one is ready to not talk about water. So, I'm done too. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, councillor in seat five, you have a quick question?
Yeah, how many consecutive fiscal years have we raised water rates?
So water rates, the last time, it looks like they were not raised was 2013.
So we're approaching eight fiscal years?
And stormwater, the same.
Right. So it's every year that we're, we have to raise them or else die of straits completely, correct, right?
Right.
Yes, and again, you know, you look at DEP standards, one of the things that they talk about within that capacity rating section, so it's chap, chapter 11 of 310 CMR, is the DEP regulations. One thing that they, that they go through in there is, is rate supporting, and rather than doing a large rate increase, you know, every four years, you know, you do small increases on a yearly basis, so.
How, how many more do you think you would be here in the future, asking for a rate increase?
Every year.
You know, you asked me that last year.
I ask every time.
Exactly. You know, I, I can't, everything goes up, you know, chemicals go up, labor costs go up, you know, you go to the store and you buy, you buy a thing of milk, you go, you get your oil changed. It's not this, you don't pay the same that you paid in 2013, nobody does.
It's not, it's not hyperbole when I say things like, you wanna raise them to the end of time, because literally that's what we hear most, every year.
You know, it, it's, it's something, it's based on, it's based on the needs of the budget every year.
Yeah.
But if, you know, the state came down tomorrow, or, or if the federal government said, we're gonna pay off all your debt, you know, we'd have, we'd have a rate reduction. You know, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't, I wouldn't keep taking that money from our ratepayers if we didn't need it.
Just know that my no vote's not a personal thing, I, I hope you know that, and, you know, I'm ready to vote, I yield.
Thank you, councillor in seat one, councillor Kadim.
Thank you. So first of all, I think it's really important for us to understand how government works, okay? We are not in the business of selling a product, we're in the business of selling services. So, we have a budget, we need a balanced budget, we have expenses, we've got revenues. We only get revenues through taxes and rate increases, there's no other way to generate revenue, okay? So if we're providing a service, and we want a service to continue, then we need to support it through rates. Nobody wants to see rate increases. But the reality of the situation is that the simple question is, the rates are gonna increase every single year. We as the city council need to be, make sure we are not short-sighted, that we are looking out for the ratepayers. So I'm gonna ask some very simple questions, okay? We had $1.9 million in the sewer that was gonna be used for retained earnings, okay? One-time money. I asked the question during the budget cycle, if we did not use that because we're creating a structural deficit, what would we have to increase the rates by? 80 cents, okay? Now go tell the average resident that we're gonna have an 80 cent increase, we're only looking for a 7 cent increase and a 5 cent increase. But if we want to be truly fiscally responsible, we would have to increase the rates by 80 cents, okay? How much do we have in the stabilization account?
Uh, 700,000, it's a little over 700,000.
700,000.
Yeah.
And, and sewer?
Uh, both.
Both combined?
No, both water and each.
Each 700,000, okay. So that means our checking account for the, for the folks at home, our checking account only has $700,000, okay? We're talking about a $26 million operating budget for sewer, we're talking about a $14 million operating budget for, for water. We have $700,000 in our checking account, we're playing with, you know, some pocket change that we just won off of a scratch ticket, okay? And we're trying to make sure that, that the ratepayers are not being impacted. However, with that, the rates that we're covering right now, every year, the city council continues to vote for Phase 21, 22, 23, which are infrastructure improvement projects to replace the water mains. There was a ballot question a couple of years ago, two years ago, three years ago, I forget exactly how long it was, $350 million. The voters voted for infrastructure improvements to the tune of $350 million. How are we paying for that? Through rates, rate increases, that's the only way we do this. So now, what I will ask is, and I'm not trying to put this, you know, scary tactics, you know, DEP's gonna come down, they're gonna take over, but listen, the honest assessment is, is that when we get the letter from DEP, is anybody in this, any, any of these seats gonna say, yes, let the state take over water and sewer? So the answer's gonna be no, we all know that, right? So that means at that point, whether it's now or when they come down, we're gonna vote to rate, raise the rates. Do we vote to raise the rates at 7 and 5%, or are we gonna wait later and vote at 80 cents? Okay? So if we don't vote, let's just say we take the no vote tonight, okay? Take the no vote, you're gonna run a deficit, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So you're not gonna get any retained earnings for next year, right? Because it's, because the, the deficit that you're gonna have is gonna be made up for any surplus, right? You have zero surplus. So, the $1.9 million that we used from last year, because we had a surplus last year, is not there because it's a deficit. So now we're making up 80% at 80 cents, plus whatever other increases you're gonna have, unless we're reducing your expenses. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay. So, where are we going? Where do we go with this? So we've got, so we're gonna use $700,000. So $700,000 gets you, I don't know, 40 cents? So $700,000 gets you, I don't know, forty cents, right, on, on each side? Okay, so we're still forty cents short. All right, so we're still at, at the point. So we, we have to raise rates. That's the reality of the situation. There's, there's no question about it. So we'd either do it now, or we wait until the, till the DEP comes down, and then we do it then. But at the end of the day, you're running a deficit, we're not going to have any free cash for next year, so we're talking about significant rate increases next year. So do we do it now? Or do we tell the ratepayers, by the way, not only are you getting a two and a half percent increase in your taxes, plus you're going to get a debt exclusion, plus we're going to raise your water and sewer rates even higher? Is that really what we were elected to do? I know it's easy to say we don't want to raise rates. I understand that. But at the end of the day, we were elected to make sure that the government is running, services are being provided that are expected by the taxpayers. We're also make, responsible to make sure that we are looking out for the taxpayers. It's irresponsible to allow the deficit to continue to move forward, knowing full well that we have no cushion to be able to reduce the rates. Because we're going up at least eighty to, eighty cents to a dollar, if not more, next year, if we don't address it now. At least if we dress it now, maybe we have some free cash that's going to be able to be carried over for next year, to be able to use it to yet again, reduce the rate increase. But when I hear that, we, you know, we look back and we look at, we say, well, how, every year we increase, of course we increase, but we also, every year, take a vote to allow him to go out and bond for $5 million to, to improve water and sewer pipes. How do you, how do you think we're paying for that? We don't just put it on a credit card and when, and when the credit card company comes file bankruptcy, we can't say, hey, listen, this, this is not the way it works, right? And we can't increase, you know, products that we don't provide. We provide a service. So we've got to be able to, to come to some understanding, but I'm telling you, at the end of the day, we're going to be forced to raise the rates. And it's going to be a lot more if we have to do it next year. So now, the only reason I'm supporting this is because we needed a financial plan, right? I don't think this, I don't think your budget's perfect. There's some room that we can move around in. I don't think it's enough to get, cut, cut the, you know, to balance your budget, especially at this time. But we are making progress in terms of making sure that we have a financial policy so that we understand that we want to minimize the rate impacts to the ratepayers. But we also need to make sure that we're not continuous, continuously creating a structural deficit. And I agree with my colleagues, who have stated that we need to use this OPERA money to further your, all the progress that we have been ma, making. The $350 million that has been authorized with the, the vote should be utilized. All the, you know, the additional pipes, so that we can maybe, and I forget what phase we're on, if it's 21, 22, 25,
Twenty one.
21. So if we're using it for phase 22, phase 23, and then that's going to ensure that we're, we're reducing the rates in the future, I absolutely, wholeheartedly agree with that. But to your point, not only are you doing everything you need to do for the sewer and water, but you're also contributing over onto the general fund, which is being supported by the taxes. So you're paying for benefits, you're paying for overhead costs, you're paying for the use of the CFO and the treasurer and the collector, you know, that, the average, the average taxpayer doesn't understand that, but the nine councils here are supposed to understand that. And that's how we're supposed to make our decisions, right? And it's not supposed to be making decisions because it's, it's, you know, politically expedient. Getting rid of pays your throw wasn't politically expedient. I mean, was, was politically expedient, but look at what we're talking about. We're talking about the fact that we don't have enough money to cover our operating costs, but yet we still are expected to pick up trash. And if we don't pick up trash, we've got residents who are upset by it. We talked about Flint, Michigan. Turn on the water. How, how, it is, the, the fact that we can turn on a water and we have clean drinking water is something that we should not be taking grant, for granted. We go back to Flint, Michigan, okay? Rusty water, dirty water, not clean, we have clean water, right? And the expectation, nobody really thinks about it, you turn on your faucet, it is clean. That doesn't happen on its own. There's a lot that goes into it. Now, in terms of, you know, your supply chain management, and whether or not we're ordering too much supplies or chemicals, and maybe we need to look at just-in-time inventory, I don't know if that's, that's the case, but you want to look at COVID and talk about COVID, let's look at supply chain situation that we've got. We can't get folks to manufacture the supplies that we need, and we can't get them to deliver it, okay? So what happened? The cost of lumber, lumber went up through the roof, okay? What would have cost you, you know, $20 is now costing you $200. And that goes on and on and on. So that also impacts us, right? So all your supplies, not being able to, to get your, your chemicals in time, chlorine, I mean, everybody wanted a pool, right? There was chlorine, the amount of chlorine, there's a shortage on chlorine, right? So we, we continue to go down the road and we can talk about it, but again, I, I think we need to, we need to be, at some point, be realistic about what we're asking for and what we're talking about. And again, I'm going to support this because we've got a financial policy at least drafted that is going to be moving forward, that is going to help the city and get us back on the right, from my standpoint, on, on the right road to ensure that we are providing fiscal, responsible decision-making process, and we're not creating structural deficits from year over to year. And, and that's where I stand. I've always tried to support your department, but I've also agree with my colleagues, we need to do a little bit better job, and I know you've got lean budgets, we need to make them leaner, right? So we need to do that. And I hope, moving forward, like I just said, we're, we're starting the FY '23 budget, hopefully in, in January or February. We, we hope to see some leaner, leaner budgets moving forward, but I'm going to be supporting this because at the end of the day, we're going to be raising it one way or the other. And I just prefer to raise it now and minimize the impact of the ratepayer and get you what you need, so that we can continue to try to hopefully increase our stabilization accounts to, to offset any unforeseen disasters that may be coming up in, in water or sewer. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Ferland, I remember specifically, whether it was last year or the year before, a discussion was had, and the council, while I supported it at that time, asked you to try to work on presenting a budget in future years that indicated doing more with less, looking at your expenses, trying to find a way to lean out your expenses. So I'm going to ask a very specific question. What efforts were done by you and your department to reduce expenses this year versus last year and the year before?
So it's, it's funny that you asked that question, and if Mr. Terry was here, he would have a, he would have a very good answer. Mr. Terry was the Director of Water Administration for years, worked for the Water Department, he's now back on the Water Board. When he was first presented this budget back in, prior to March of last year, you know, he took a look at the budget, he called me up the first thing, and he says, I, I can't believe these budgets. These are some of the same numbers that I used to use 20 years ago for, you know, for forms, for, for a lot of the items within there. You know, that's one thing that, you know, you pull up one of our budgets from years ago, and there isn't much of an increase in many of our line items. You know, chemicals go up and stuff like that, but every year, we're cutting and we're running as lean of a budget as you can. Through here, you know, one of the things that we did, one of the cuts that was made was in the, if you go to water and you go to treatment, we reduce some, we reduce some expenses in relation to maintenance. That's because we've, we're able to hire an excellent maintenance individual that we have down there. Now, that's very, very savvy. But maintenance still needs to be done, so there's still a cost associated with getting the pots and stuff like that, but that's less stuff that we have to send out. You know, every one of these line items is going through by myself, by my managers. If you go through, I think, vehicles and vehicle repairs within water distribution, you'll see a reduction in the, in the repair cost. That's because we've gotten, you know, over the years, we've gotten some new vehicles, got rid of some older vehicles, some of our larger equipment, backhoes we've been able to replace within the past couple of years. But, and that reduced, you know, that had the capital cost within that fiscal year, but then it reduces our costs. So every one of these line items within our budget is, is scrutinized individually by either the managers or myself to reduce. I hope, I hope that answers your question.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
All right, now I know we've spoken at length, and APP has been brought up, and I'll make this brief. The last vote we took on water and sewer increases, I caught a beating fork, because I changed my vote, because I listened to your concerns. And I will say publicly, I did get to witness your department respond to an emergency recently in my neighborhood. Phenomenal service. I have a question for you. So if we, and I proposed this in a closed-door meeting with an APP, and I, I'm a proponent of yours once again, if we were to take the two top issues within the city, one being water and sewer, and the second being public safety, cut that APP money in half to say, let's say $35 million, give you half, give the public safety half, do you think down the road, say next year or the year after, if you were able to, and I'm using 35 million as a fictitious number here, would you see less burden on your budget if you were allocated more funding from the APP, so you can take care of some projects that won't be needed to be taken care of for another 20 years or so? Would it free up cash within your budget for the next couple of years to follow?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be particularly this year, and it's funny, while, while I was sitting there earlier, I was doodling up a graphic that I want to make. I put it on the council, back in the council agenda, and it was just going to be laying out how APP could help and, and with, with, you know, how it could affect rates or budgets. So any project after March of 2021, when the bill was passed, is eligible to be able to use APP funding, as long as borrowing has not been, long-term borrowing has not been done on that project. So any project that started from there, so let's say, you know, we start a project now, the project lasts for two years. The long-term borrowing would probably happen sometime in February 2023, is when the city would go out with the long-term borrowing for that project. The debt service that would be required on that project would probably be on the July 2023 budget. So that's when you would see the rate increase for that, for that budget, you know, for that particular project. So at that point, that's when you would see, you know, not necessarily the rate reduction, but, you know, a balance due to the APP funds being used for a project rather than using borrowing.
All right, so in a nutshell, yes. So if we do use it, the rates may not go up over the next few years, and we can stop the, where we started in, I guess it was 2013, council league, was the year we go. I would like to publicly ask the mayor to look at this, since this is a, a large issue that we have to tackle, and future councils are going to have to tackle. And I would publicly like to ask the mayor to allocate more funding to the Water Department. And I would go as high as 40, 50 percent, I would, because you need it. But we can't keep throwing the burden on the taxpayer every year for them to be able to come up with the money that we need. I understand Counselor Kadim's side to this, he's an administrator, and, and I get it, and I don't disagree with what he's saying. I just think we have $70 million. I know we keep saying one-time money, but a lot of the projects that you do are, they go out 20, 25 years, where we spend it now, and we don't, the city won't have to worry about it for 25 years. That's where I would like to see this go. And again, I would like to see that the mayor look at this, review it, and give you a substantial amount of that APP funding. And with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind the council for, for everybody's own edification, right? So I know we're all speaking about APP, and I understood it correctly when Mr. Ferland said, the APP allocation would really have nothing to do with the, this year's rates, that would be for future years. So that's how I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ferland, right? It, it's pretty much if you had $13 million of APP money to use, you're not going to have to go for, whether it's a specific phase, or you don't have to go bond, and they don't have to pay for the bonds, the cost to bond, the cost for the mortgage payments per se to bond those projects. So I know counselors are speaking, I just want to let the record reflect, that counselors are speaking about APP money, but APP has nothing to do with this year's rates. We can't do anything with APP money to reduce the rates this year. In future years, the council, with the projects that, whether they allocate $13 million or $30 million, will eventually end up reducing the rates, because you don't have to go bond for it. You don't have to pay the interest on the bond, whether they go long or short, short term when it comes to that. So I don't want, I don't want there to be confusion and people hung up on the fact that there's APP money coming down the road. The real questions still present themselves, in my opinion, that we have expenses that I don't think personally were really looked at that closely, but that's my opinion. Counselor Peckham?
Just to touch upon that, and what, where I was going with this was, and I don't know if I made myself clear, was we always use the term kicking a can down the road? Well, we may eventually have to, may be able to stop kicking that can if we take care of some of these projects with the allocated APP funding, and make your life a hell of a lot easier. And that's what I would like to do. And with that, I yield, thank you.
Does the infrastructure, the infrastructure plan that Biden passed, does that have anything to do with water and sewer? How will that help you, Mr. Ferland?
So the recent one that was just passed by the Biden administration, there is, originally that started out as a large utility, and the utility shrunk, 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 shrunk. And a lot of it is going towards roads and bridges, from my understanding now, the whole entire project. There is still money within there for, and they use some key terms, I haven't read the whole entire bill yet, but they use some specific key terms in relation to PFAS, which is contaminant that a lot of communities are dealing with, lead removal within water systems, as well as CSOs. So we're affected by two of those. It's, it's going to be just like the APP money is, we're going to have to see how everything settles out and trickles down, but those were specifically.
Sorry, so there's nothing. And how much is the CSO debt?
The CSO debt?
Yeah. Mandated, the federally mandated CSO project.
So so far, we've spent probably about $250 million. Don't quote me exactly on that.
What are, what's left?
It's right on that ballpark. You know, again, we have the authorization that was approved by voters in November 2017 of 123 million that we'll be spending up until 2025. And then we're still going to have additional projects moving on that gets some of our CSOs within compliant, within our complacency with our federal court order, but it doesn't get all of them. We're still going to have new ones coming down. New permits that have come down, that we're dealing with too, is the MS4 permit from EPA that's to do with any separated storm systems within, within a rural area, which we have. So they used to only regulate sewer, now they're regulating all the stormwater that runs up often. There's a lot of requirements that we've had to comply with moving forward. Coming forward, starting probably in February, there's going to be a new requirement that we need to meet with CSOs in relation to our discharges and notification of our discharges. So it, you know, it's, the regulations are always changing, these unfunded mandates that, that are coming down, you know.
Okay. So is it, is a big number attached to that? Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Council Vice President?
Thank you. Mr. Ferland, we had a different conversation at the ordinance meeting about the employees' rate of pay. And I agree, and I think everybody at that meeting agreed, we had the numbers in front of us, specifically the numbers that the outside company that was hired are being paid more than our own employees. However, they are, as Counselor in seat eight said, they are under the ASME union, so we could raise the rates to any amount, and we still wouldn't be able to pay them more. That is a contract negotiation, correct?
So for the, for the operators, the operators are within the ASME union, the management, so the director is not within, within the ASME union, they're with, within ordinance.
Correct. And so, go ahead, sorry.
The director would need, the ordinance changed, the ASME union agreement would need, would need a side letter of agreement or a contract, or renegotiation for the increases in there.
Okay. And the director, and we, we spoke about that at the meeting too, that's a not-to-exceed number, and I had asked at that time if you could have come down and asked for that to be changed. Mrs. Sahadi was there as well, and you had indicated that she wouldn't have stayed anyway because she wouldn't have thought it was fair to the other employees. So we could have worked around that with the director.
You know.
I just don't want people to get the, the wrong impression that if, if we don't, that we'd be able to pay all of these people more if we raise the rates, because our hands are still tied away.
Right, so there So there, there would need to be steps that, that would need to be done. You know, one of the big things with, with discussions, you know, how am I supposed to, uh, tell some people within the water? If, if I have a budget that's, that's unsupported and I may have to lay off staff or make, uh, large cuts within the budget, how, how can I honestly, truly go and negotiate to give some people an increase and then potentially lay some people off? You know, that, that's one thing that was looked at at the time. You know, how could that be done? You know?
And I don't think that anybody disagrees, or at least anyone at ordinance disagreed, uh, that, that they need to be paid more. But there are, there are other hurdles to that, not just raising the rates. I just wanted to, to point that out. And as far as the infrastructure improvements, I fully understand that, um, it has to be new projects and it won't change this year's rates. But if we don't start using the funds, and I am advocating for more funds for the Water and Sewer Department, the rates are, are never going to go down. We're going to be having the same conversation next year and the year after and the year after. And then we'll be looking in hindsight, saying, had we spent more money on infrastructure improvements, we would be able to lower the rates at this point, but we didn't, so we can't. Um, I think you have the votes here tonight for your water rates. I'm, I'm still going to be voting no, because I want you to get more money for your infrastructure improvements so that we can see, um, a reduction in the rates. Uh, Councilor Kadim spoke about all of the, um, improvements that the voters voted on. And we have the ability to pay for those rather than to bond for those. And Councilor in seat two spoke about a loan order that was in front of us. It was in the spring. And it did have a caveat on it that if APP funds were available, they would be used. And, and, and they weren't used. It was, it was put through. And that shouldn't have happened. I believe there was three orders. One of them was yours, correct? So, uh, you know, I, I would be in favor with Councilor in seat six. You know, formally requesting that the administration, um, propose more of the APP funds to, uh, Mr. Ferland for his infrastructure improvements so that in a couple of years, we're not having this conversation and looking back, saying we, we could have done more. That I yield.
Any of the $700,000 that's in your, uh, stabilization account, uh, carryover from the prior year? Or is that all, uh, reserves, uh, savings from this fiscal year?
Uh, so those were acquired, uh, over the past seven years or so. We've put $100,000 from, uh, either our free cash or our operational budget into that. That was a policy that was brought in front of the, uh, council seven or eight years ago, and we've stuck with that policy. Uh, so we've increased it by a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars per year.
So there was $600,000 in there starting this fiscal year?
Uh, we didn't do the transfer yet for this fiscal year, again, because of, uh, the lack of, uh,
Right.
the budget being supported by the rates.
So there was $600,000 prior to this fiscal year in your stabilization account?
Uh, seven hundred.
Prior to the last fiscal year.
Seven hundred.
Right. Seven hundred or 600,000?
So coming into this fiscal year, there was $700,000 in. The year prior, there was, so from last year, in last year's fiscal budget, there was $600,000 and we added $100,000.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? There's a motion on the floor to adopt. Is there, hearing no further discussion, I'll entertain a roll call at this time.
So this is, would be passing the ordinance through first reading?
Yep, first reading.
First reading. Councilor Kadim?
I think that vote was made.
Uh, there's a mo, the motion.
The motion was to pass through first reading.
The first reading. We still have two more readings.
Yep. Councilor Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yeah.
Lilibidi-Labo?
No.
Lee?
No.
Peckham?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Motion passes?
Yes.
Okay.
You have a communi, the PEREX appropriation for fiscal year 2023?
Motion accepted and placed on file.
Motion to accept and place on files, been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly, the Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on November 30th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be referred to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation. This was the, um, CART program.
Motion refer?
Motion to refer?
Second.
Has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion so made.
Made by Councilor Peckham, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good night.